I'm seeing a second term. And turns it on and
I'm seeing a second term. No, I forgot all my packet at home.
Director Pagan, are we, any reason I should not start the meeting? Are we good to go?
We are good to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Great to see a few faces here. It'll be, should be a fun meeting. Welcome to the planning commission meeting for May 13th. We want to start today with a roll call attendance called the order.
Chair Miner?
Present.
Commissioner Balkovak?
Here.
Commissioner Goddard? Commissioner Nance?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Winham?
Here.
Commissioner Willem?
Thank you very much. I wanted to welcome our two new commissioners today. Great to have you. And yeah, we're excited for, should be a good first meeting. I'm excited to have you today. I will move to item two, which is approval of minutes. And I have to recuse myself on this item. Maybe I can get some direction. But I have to accuse myself on this item because I was not in attendance. Do we need somebody else? Can I still manage it?
You should be able to still handle the chair of that. I mean, you were just not present, but you're still chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I actually think we have three refusals. So, correct, yeah. So that passes through all voting members today. Our next item is election of officers. Now, we have a little bit of a funny thing today. Typically, now, this is not, as I understand it, this is not set in stone, but typically, the vice chair would be the person to step into the chair position. We do not have a vice chair because Brandy termed out this last meeting. So I wanted to take the opportunity to make a motion for a new chair and vice chair today, and then I will turn it over for either a second or further discussion. But I would like to, I would like to make a motion for Russ to step in as the chair for the next term and to Leslie to be the vice chair. The rationale for that is, at this point, I think I can safely say that Russ has more experience in development and understanding the code than probably all the rest of us put together, having worked in this industry for decades. I certainly appreciate his attitude, how much time he spends on the packets, and how good he is working with people. So I think that would be a great addition to this next year in planning commission. With that, I will turn it over to the rest of the commission for either a second or discussion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? None, passes unanimously. We need to change chair or? Okay, you get the middle. Uh, no, no, sir.
Thank you, Clerk Jennifer. I'm counting on you to keep me in order. Give me, give me the eye. I also say I'm honored, thank you. Those were very kind words, probably overstated knowledge, but I, I've always been a good actor. Number two is, I will do my best to keep this on order without having necessarily experienced doing this in this context. With that, I will jump right into item number five, planning commission items. Item A is the consent calendar, seeing none. We will move past that. We will move to public hearings, and the first item is 5B1 subdivision application rezoning application, Zinco Holdings LLC. The details are in the agenda and in, and in the packet. And I see a staff member stepping up to the lectern. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to staff to introduce this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to Commissioners Nance and Ryan. Welcome aboard. Yes, so today I'll be speaking to you about Zinko subdivision, tentative map application and rezoning. So the project involves two parcels. Those are the parcels shaded in gray there. They're at 3150 and 3250 Jordan Lane. We see Keswick Dam Road to the north and Lake Boulevard to the east. These, the site is kind of tucked tucked back there on an infill, infill parcel. Currently, the properties, both of them are zoned RS3. That stands for residential, single-family, three units per acre. If you'll notice, this screenshot is from the general plan, general plan map. And so their general plan designations are right there, two to three and a half units per acre for the western parcel, and for the eastern parcel is three and a half to six units per acre. If, if you're paying attention, you'll notice that there's a slight discrepancy here between the zoning and the general plan designations, but we'll get to those in another slide. So this is what the tentative map, the proposed tentative map looks like. Just to orient you, so Deodar Way is right here, Jordan Lane, right here goes this way, there's your North Arrow. So the project proposes 16 single-family lots on this 4.42 acre site. It's surrounded by existing residential development. To the east is the, there's a mobile home park right here, and the, on the other sides is existing single-family development. Access to the subdivision would be here. This is Road A. I don't know if you can see, maybe small for some of you. This is Road A, goes that way, this is Road B. So access would be off Jordan Lane into Road A. And Road A connects here, stubs out. There's actually an easement that goes all the way up, off map, up to Keswick Dam Road over here. There's actually an easement there already for public right-of-way. That's unimproved currently. And it's offered for dedication, but it's in limbo. So at such time that it becomes improved, the city would, if it was improved to city standards, it would be, it would be accepted. But the reason I bring that up is, well firstly, to explain that it just stubs out instead of doing a cul-de-sac, which would normally be standard. So we're expecting future roadway through there at some point. But until then, there's off-site improvements also. So right up there, there's a, it's hard to keep this thing still. There is pinpoint accuracy. There's a water line stubbed out right there. So it's like basically a dead end in the water line. So the project is to bring this water line off-site and to connect to that stub, and that does two things. One, it brings better quality water to all the customers along here. And two, it's easier for maintenance. Not easier, it, it, it prevents problems. Because what happens is when there's dead ends and the system kind of gunk accumulates there at those dead ends. And so it leaves the water quality issues and maintenance issues. So by looping that system with this project, there's, those two issues are being resolved for that area. In terms of lot sizes, the range goes from approximately 7,000 square feet on the smaller side to 16,000 square feet on the larger side, with an average of 9,500 square feet in area for the lot size. And those larger lots, pretty much are mostly these lots here, this parcel 10 and parcel four, they have these detention base basin features. That's just a part of the storm drain system, essentially, in so many words. And because there's no HOA or anything, this is all going to be on what's called the landscape maintenance district. So that is to say that there will be no entity that could own remainder parcels on its own, so these parcels need to be part of private properties. And so parcel four and parcel ten have these larger areas here of those basins that increase the size of those. So fun fact. Block post fencing, landscaping, curb gutter and sidewalk are required with the draft conditions of approval along Deodar Way and Jordan Lane. So that would be here, sidewalk and block post fencing, which is actually required to be at the back of a five-foot public service easement. So you'd have curb gutter, then sidewalk, then a five-foot public service easement that would be required to be landscaped, and then the fence would be at the back of that. So the fence wouldn't be right at the back of sidewalk, so that's to kind of soften the effect of that, of that, of that fencing there. And the, the reason for that is that these lots are, this is infill development, so it's, 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 it's not like you can start from scratch. So the parcel's already surrounded by development, hence the infill. And so it's, it's hard to make these kind of parcels work, and so we typically don't like to see in double-frontage lots. This is double-frontage because it'll have frontage on Road B, and it'll have frontage on Jordan Lane. So all these parcels will have to waive access to Deodar Way and Jordan Lane, and put up that, that permanent block post fencing so that people aren't coming in and out of there. So that's kind of some of the reasoning behind that. Okay, moving on. So I said we talk about that rezoning. So thirty-two fifty, Jordan Lane currently is zoned RS3, like I mentioned before, but it has a general plan designation of three-point-five to six units per acre. So its zoning is actually below the minimum required in the general plan. So that's, that's no fault of the applicant. There, there's, I don't know the history on that, but it exists. And so one of the things that the rezoning will do is bring that parcel into conformance with the general plan. So that's just some good housekeeping in terms of what the city gets out of the rezoning. But in terms of, for the applicant, bringing both of those parcels from RS3 to RS3 and a half, it essentially allows them to build, build a little bit more density into the site. It's a density that's still allowed and expected under the general plan, and it's congruent, congruent with the surrounding neighborhood. The lots match lot sizes in the surrounding neighborhood. So there's, there's nothing outlandish there with the, with the rezoning, and it brings the site into conformance with the general plan. So that's why we're recommending approval of the rezoning with this tentative map. So some of you will remember from last year around this time, we were here before. This project originally came here in April of twenty-twenty-four. There was public concern regarding the original biological report. And there was also some concern, members of the public had driven by the site after receiving notice of the hearing, and were concerned about some emergent wetlands that appeared to be on site. Those wetlands were not, were not present when the biological report that the city received was done. There was some time between then and between the hearing that those wetlands were created due to the presence of some heavy equipment. In addition, there were some trees removed from the site just a few days prior to the previous public hearing, and those were removed without any permits or anything, and so there was a public concern about that and, and city concern about that. So the item was continued to a date uncertain, which we now know is today. We can be certain about that as we're here right now. And so we're picking up from where we left off today, so that's just a little, a little history if you're getting deja vu. So to speak to the biological resources again, which were a concern, a new biological resources assessment was completed, this time by a different consultant, and staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration for the project. That's what MND stands for. I'm not trying to kill you with jargon, but these words get a little long. So yeah, wetlands were identified on the site, but according to the biological report, no special status wetland species had the potential to occur on site. That's just due to the nature of the depth of the pools and the soils and all that. And that's not to say that there's no species. I mean, I went out there and there were tadpoles, but the question is, is if there are special status species. And so the report came back negative on the potential for special status wetland species, plant and animal. In terms of the rest of the site, there weren't really any results for special status species animals. Apart from when there's trees, there can be birds, so although no birds were identified during the site visit, that potential is always there, so there is a mitigation measure in the environmental document. It's kind of our typical standard, check for birds before you construct and let us know that there's no nest there if you're constructing during the nesting season. That's basically what that condition says. And then more interest, more interestingly, the report wasn't able to rule out the potential for three special status plants to occur on site. Now, that doesn't mean that these would occur, and the report actually leaned on it being very unlikely that they would occur, but nonetheless, they technically can't be ruled out. And so protocol-level pre-construction surveys for Redding Checker Bloom, Dubious Pea and Henderson's Bent Grass would be required prior to issuance of any grading or building permit. So that's just a rundown of the biological resources, in terms of one of the other concerns from the last hearing, trees. So fifty-nine qualifying trees, that's trees that are measured six inches diameter when measured at breast height. That's about four and a half feet off the ground. So if they're four and a half feet, if they measure six inches below, six inches and below, they don't count. If they measure above six inches, so six-point-one or six-point-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, if you're that picky, if they measure anywhere there, they would qualify. So fifty-nine of those trees that do measure at that diameter were removed from the site. Eighty-five of the original one-hundred-forty-four trees still remain. So in section eighteen forty-five of the, of the RMCS Redding Municipal Code, so basically the zoning code, we have a tree management ordinance, and there's provisions for how to deal with the unpermitted removal of trees. And long story short, the unpermitted removals of trees is handled separately and apart from like a project. And so we've done that. We've separated the issue of the trees out. And so the project conditions don't deal with that directly. But it's not to say that the issue is not being dealt with. We have issued a, a fine of thirty thousand dollars, and grading and building permits won't be issued until, won't be issued for this project until that, that fine is paid. As for traffic, the sixteen units proposed is actually, it's, I don't want to say that it's nothing, but it, it is a small, in terms of what a subdivision can be, a subdivision can be enormous. So in terms of all subdivisions ever created ever in the world, this is a rather small one. And so that brings it in below a threshold required even to, to need a traffic study. It's so small that it's, it doesn't, the traffic of it doesn't blip on the radar. Nonetheless, there is concern about Deodar Way, and rightfully so. If you see the, the graphic here, this is Deodar Way. You notice the width of the street to the north and right there on the south is wider. The street right here, it juts in and it gets kind of basically at half-size. That's because the mobile home park here exists in, in, it's actually inaccurate to say it exists in the street. It's, has to do with the history of Bureau of Land Management and prescriptive easements and a bunch of boring technical stuff. But suffice it to say that this easement was, was never prescribed, I guess we could say, to the public. And so they, they used this land and now it's theirs. And so the, the space needed to widen this road is actually on their side. And if we took it on this side, it would present turn radius problems and all kinds of issues. So really, what would be needed is the, is the land from, from the mobile home parks side. So that being said, the current width is twenty feet and of travel width, and that's technically adequate for two-lane travel and emergency response. The needed right-of-way being on the other side, for the city to require the applicant to acquire that land, to buy it or work out whatever kind of deal, it would be, to put it in laypeople's terms, it'd be kind of dicey in terms of what's, what, in terms of nexus in proportionality. So because there's adequate travel width to meet standard, the standard two-way travel width, and there's adequate emergency response, it actually, we don't really have a good argument to require the subdivision to go purchase that land to, and to widen the road and then give, not give us the road, but dedicate that land for a, for a right-of-way easement. That nexus in proportionality, staff feels is not there, so that's why that requirement doesn't exist. And so that's kind of the, the situation with Deodar, with Deodar, Deodar Way right now. So as I mentioned before, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared, and that's, that's the SEQA document. So California Environmental Quality Act, that's SEQA. There's more sections in there than just biological. There's, there's a lot of them. But the biological was the one that, that folks were most concerned about. But we addressed all, every section of the initial study checklist in the mitigated negative declaration. There's no significant impacts with the project with the mitigation measures incorporated. Again, the pre-construction surveys for the special status plants and the nesting bird surveys for nesting birds. So with those mitigation measures, there's no significant impacts with the project. Again, I listed the special status species there again, if you wanted to read that. So we did receive some public comments. I want to briefly go through, kind of summarize what those were. I, I think I've touched on most of that already, but I'll go over some of the finer points again. So the unpermitted removal of trees, again, the fines been issued and the city's handling that per section eighteen forty-five of the zoning code. One of the things we received a couple of comments on were the piles of woodland debris. So there appear to be some debris left behind from the removal of trees and removal of, of manzanita and whatnot. Condition number twenty-four of the attached draft conditions of approval do require that the piles, any piles due to construction or, or anything having to do with the project, that they be removed prior to the start of the fire season, or if they're during the fire season already, that they be removed immediately. And if that did not occur, that would become a code enforcement issue. So that is a part of the conditions of approval to remove the, those debris from the site. Site drainage was an issue I didn't touch on in any earlier slide. So as I mentioned, the, those tire ruts created some, some wetlands. The reason is, is there's about eighteen inches below the surface of the soil. There's something called an interrated hardpan, I think is what it's called. It basically means really compacted soil that water doesn't go through very easily. So you basically only have eighteen inches of like soil sponge that takes up the water before the water kind of stops and starts filling up the sponge and then spilling out the top of the sponge and then going everywhere, and that's why you kind of see those, those, those puddles out there. When it rains a lot, becau, because of that, the water spreads laterally and it goes into like neighbors' yards and, and neighboring properties, and so there was some concern about the drainage and what's going on because some of the neighboring properties, especially on the northeast, end up flooding. And yeah, so the project, I mean, with the grading and introduction of storm drain system and everything, that water would all go now into the storm drain system and out under Deodar Way. So the, the, the surface pooling and running off shouldn't be a problem anymore with, with the development. We touched on Deodar Way, the third bullet there. One of the things that people pointed out was that Deodar Way is in a, in a state of disrepair. I don't think anybody's going to argue with that. The question is whether or not the city, whether or not the city can ask or force a developer to, to essentially take care of the city's own maintenance issues. In some instances, if there's enough nexus in proportionality, that can make sense. In this instance, with sixteen houses, it's really unfortunately on the, it's just what it is in terms of the city being able to maintain its streets. I know our Public Works guys and gals are doing the best they can with the budget they have to maintain over nine hundred lane miles of roadway in the city. And so I'm, I'm, I don't want to, I don't know it for a fact, but I, I'd put money that Deodar Way is somewhere on a list to be redone at some point, but it's just a matter of budget and getting to it amidst the rest of everything in the city. So long story short, while the situation is recognized, staff doesn't feel there's significant nexus in proportionality to require a grind and overlay of, of Deodar Way for, for the project. And again, the previous biological report, I think I got into that with sufficient detail, I think, for our purposes here. So in conclusion, the proposal is consistent with the goals and policies of the city's general plan. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to City Council, and that's because of the rezoning. The council has to, is the body that can approve that ordinance, and approval of the project is dependent upon that rezoning, so therefore the whole thing ultimately needs to be approved by council, but. So staff's recommending that this body make a recommendation to the City Council to determine that the necessary findings for approval are in evidence, to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program, and to approve the tentative map and rezoning application, subject to the draft conditions of approval. And with that, I'm available for any questions?
So thank you, Mr. Castro. What I'll do now is turn to the commissioners and see if any of them have questions of you or other staff before we open the public hearing.
Thank you for your report. I have a clarification question on page four of our packet. It says the city's traffic engineer has determined the number of average vehicle trips that would not trigger that. Was there an actual study done on that, or are you simply stating the sixteen housing units would not trigger a study to be done?
Yeah, so there's like, um, that sounds really smart, huh? There's like, um, there is a traffic manuals that they work off of, and actually maybe Russ can speak to this, but there's, there's kind of a cookie cutter number of expected peak hour trips with every single-family house. I don't know, or I should say, single-family unit. I don't know exactly what that number is, but until you, until a certain number are reached, it doesn't trigger the need for a traffic study. So those, those are real numbers that Public Works knows. I don't have those off the top of my head, but thirty-five, I'm being told.
Thank you.
Thirty-five triggers it.
So it was based off of that, not a true study that was done on that subdivision? Okay. And then can you talk a little bit about why maybe code enforcement hasn't issued a citation since those trees were down April twenty-twenty-four, and they're still there?
Yeah, so we work in coordination with code enforcement on a lot of things, especially zoning issues. And so if something is being handled by planning in the zoning realm, it kind of stays with us. The idea is that we ultimately want our citizens and, and our customers, I guess, to be in compliance with the code. That's the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal isn't necessarily to try to extract money from people. The idea is to bring, to bring situations into conformity with the Redding Municipal Code. So if there's a code enforcement issue that is being actively dealt with in another division in our case, or I imagine another department, code enforcement kind of puts that on hold and allows the situation to be resolved to the best it can be until we run out of options and have to go back to code enforcement. So in this case, we're, we're handling it as planning right now.
So the fine for the trees include the trees that haven't been removed?
But there's no fine for any trees that haven't been removed.
Okay, so they're not, like when you said that they were, it's not a money issue, or you're not looking to have, it's still a quote, code enforcement issue. It's separate from the trees being removed without a permit?
Well, it, it's directly tied to the trees being removed without a permit. It's just, in this instance, planning is the one carrying the torch right now in terms of issuing the fine and, and working with the, with the applicant to get the issue resolved. If there comes a time when more teeth needed to be used, we could refer that back to code enforcement. They're the guys that actually have the tickets. We just write a, a warning letter and can issue an invoice, but then once it gets, if the heat gets too hot, we give it to the, to the, to the real guys.
And let me add some context to that, too, if I may, because the 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 code is a little bit different in this regard with tree management. So our code enforcement staff is authorized to enforce any section of the municipal code, but the tree management ordinance says that the fine is dictated by the director and then can follow the appeal process of our land use decision bodies. So it's a little odd. So this applicant has the right to appeal the fine to either bar or to planning commission or ultimately to city council. So the process is a little different than the administrative fine process we follow for other violations of the municipal code. So we've sent, I think, two notices at this point, is that right? To the applicant at this point, I believe he hasn't formally requested to appeal, although the applicant is in the audience and can speak to this if he wishes. But we would follow that process. It's a little bit a little bit odd. So we are also working on amending our tree ordinance, as you know, and working through some cleanup there. Ultimately, it would make the most sense for this to land in fully in code enforcement's lap. That's actually, as some of you may know, is handled by the administrative hearings board for assessing penalties and fines and resolving that matter. It's odd that this particular zoning code infraction is dealt with in this way. So a little bit different, but that's why we are where we are today.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. And I have in my possession one blue card that says Mr. Josh Miller wishes to speak on this item. Josh, the lectern is yours.
Good afternoon, commissioners and city staff. Just just wanted to make myself available for any questions you guys had. This is a this is a good, I feel this is a good project, both for the applicant and the city, to get some housing created and get some development in an area that that's been lacking development quite some time, so. That's pretty much all I had.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Miller. I don't see anyone else who wants to speak on this item, but I wanted to double check with Jennifer here, because I see, let me double check my numbers here, because my numbers don't make sense. It's probably me. This one said five B one that was just handed to me. Oh, for the current one, thank you. It's that one said five B three, so it doesn't take much to confuse me. You've you've, yeah, yeah, you all should have thought about this. I'm sorry. So let me let me now call him Mr. David Ledger, who is aware what his card was for. I was the only one that wasn't. And so thank you, David. Please come to the lectern.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to talk to you. I'm not really opposed to this project so much as I'm concerned about the biological surveys that was that were done. The first one was done in October, when you can't identify any blooming plants, they aren't going to be blooming. And the second one was done in October. And I see that in a lot of biological reviews that come through, as they go through and they survey it in October when there's nothing blooming, and so nothing found, no problem. And then the, so they identified thirteen species, some just to the genus. One of the genuses was aster, and back in two thousand twelve or so, the International Committee changed, they reorganized plant classification. And there's only one aster in the world, and that's in Europe. And so they're working off ancient information, and that would be like, I don't know whether it's a dandelion or a sunflower. Also, they only identified two birds on a five-acre parcel. So it makes me question not only their plant survey, but also their the biological as far as the birds. And so I'm not blaming staff because they can't identify, you know, plants and go out there and do birds. They have to depend on the the studies that come to them. But one thing, big thing of concern is I see many that come where the their their surveys are done in September, October, November, or January. And so you can't identify plants that way. And even though they're going to have a pre-construction survey, being how bad I feel anyway this is, I don't think they're going to find anything. And so maybe the Henderson's bank grass is up there. But also, they should be more thorough, because even though the CNMDV didn't identify more than three rare plants, I've gone to places where they they're they don't ex not supposed to exist, and I find rare plants. One of them is like the Sulfur Creek brodia, which is the rarest plant. Well, it only grows in one place in the world, and that's Sulfur Creek in Reading. And and so I found it further away than where the person who first discovered it and actually named it and did the first biological study that was accepted. And it's a very rare plant. But anyway, it's it's located where this botanist did not know it existed, and it took some walking. But anyway, so that's my main complaint, and it's just not so much this project, and I don't mean to blame staff because they can't be biologists, but I think when these things come in in October, especially if they've been in planning for a few years, it's just really bad policy. And the one you have coming up next is the they did they identified like seventy plants, which isn't like a lot, but at least they did.
Excuse me, Mr. Ledger, can we talk about the next project next?
Okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'd be happy, I'd happy to have you up there again with the blue card again, the second project, or I know who you are, I'll call you up anyway, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Is that the three-minute timer I just heard?
I got fifteen seconds.
Thirty seconds, thank you. I I can't see, oh, see, I haven't been trained. I've been talking all over your time, so you've got a little more time if you want.
Well, just something real quick is Santa Cruz, I looked up Santa Cruz County, and they have a policy that everyone that does one of these biological surveys has to has to go has to cover. And I was going to send that to Jeremy, but I'm not blaming staff because they can't be botanists and biologists and all that, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience as I was trying to figure out how to timer in front of me. There there really was no training for this. The so thank you. Are there, is there anyone else who wants to speak on this item? Would like to turn in a blue card? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to commission. And what I'd like to do now is just turn to the commissioners, say, do you have questions of staff or comments or items of that of interest to all of us? Go ahead, please.
I would like to suggest to my fellow commissioners two revisions to the conditions of approval. One is in regard to the block post fencing, and the city over the many years has been moving away from block post fencing because it degrades so quickly and becomes very unsightly. So I would just like to add that the materials used in the block post fence, I'm not opposed to it, but that they be durable materials. And the city can ascertain what that, it could be Trex or something similar to that. It would look better for much longer, require less maintenance. That's one. And then that's condition.
If I made that was condition number?
Twenty-five, condition of approval twenty-five.
Thank you.
And then conditional of condition of approval twenty-eight, because of the risk management associated with the detention basin on parcel ten, it's unusually steep. I think the entire fence should be included in the landscape maintenance district to make sure that it is adequately maintained on all four sides at all times, and that the gate in that fence be called out specifically as a landscape maintenance district item.
Taking notes, thank you. Give me a moment here.
Otherwise, it looks like a good project. Sounds like the city's on top of the repercussions for cutting down the trees, so I would be supportive of the project.
Very good. Any other questions of staff, comments? I'll go ahead and ask one question of staff, and that is, was the fence type requested by the city or by the applicant?
That fence type was from the city side with with the intent of something that's more durable.
Thank you. And then a question for engineering, my Public Works friend over there, Mr. Anthony. So did the city consider, you've got a twenty-foot wide, I suspect from curb face or flow line or something like that, to the other side, twenty-foot on the Diadar Way? Did you consider just a couple extra feet of widening? Even though it would introduce a minor kink, it does give a little elbow room for mirrors on big trucks. So did you consider that? And if you did, how did you come to the conclusion not to do something like that?
It was considered. John, I don't know if you want to go ahead and come up and discuss that a little more. There was a discussion that we did have, and I think John ultimately will have our answer.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Now we have Mr. John Caldwell, City's Transportation and Traffic Engineer.
Thank you. If you take a closer look at the figure, the curb-to-curb width is closer to twenty-two feet. So the dimensioning on the figure is a little awkward. We do like, you know, our city standard is ten-foot drive aisles and eight-foot shoulders for parking, so we will be posting no parking through the length of Diadar. And so, yeah, we're showing a proposed section, a road width of... So we're showing eighteen plus a two-foot gutter pan plus a two-and-a-half-foot additional asphalt on the other side of the of the road. So that leaves twenty-two and a half feet. So that leaves you with, and we don't like our drive aisles to spill over into the gutter pan, so that still leaves us ten foot of drive aisle on the asphalt and then a two-foot gutter pan.
Very good, thank you. That answered my question. Thank you.
And the rule of thumb, so our our traffic impact analysis guidelines trigger a traffic study at thirty-five peak hour trips, and each single-family home is estimated at one peak hour trip. So this would be sixteen, so about less, a little less than half of the trigger for a formal traffic study to be required for those guidelines. Any other questions?
Yeah, very good, thank you. So we'll bring it back to the commissioners. Did you have?
This is probably for Josh, Anthony. So Josh, I went out to Diadar yesterday when it was raining, and it's definitely pooling, the water's pooling up on the, call it the west side of Diadar, pretty much the whole length of that. And during the presentation, it was mentioned that I guess there's going to be some drainage ditches put in or something like that to take care of that. Is that is that accurate? And that would get rid of all that pooling?
Correct. We should have a DI, a storm drain inlet.
Yeah.
Will capture that road water, put it underground, take it away, as will the internal roads, right? It'll lead to those ponds, which will go underground and take it away.
Yeah, so the, I mean, I took some pictures, and the the water was pooling probably three feet out into the street, and we'd have, and we had some rain yesterday, but I mean, if if it if you get a decent amount of rain, that that street's probably, it's probably awful. And that was one of the public comments as well, so.
Well, I think the other big thing, too, is you're getting you're getting a curb and gutter, so that gutter will more efficiently move the water down the roadway versus right now there is no gutter, so.
Okay.
That's a, right, that's a waterway system in itself is the gutter, so it should take that water right down to the DI.
Okay, that that's good to hear. And then the second thing is that, so they're going to be, there's power line, there's power poles that are out there, and there's existing power poles on that parcel, that those are going to be buried?
I don't.
The power lines?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Yeah, those the along Diadar Way, the the overhead utilities will be undergrounded.
Okay, got you. Okay, perfect. And just probably this is for Jeremy. So Jeremy, regarding the the outstanding thirty thousand dollars, so can we confirm, has a citation been issued to the applicant to date?
Formally, no, it's a notice of violation is our first step. And so we've submitted two of those. Generally, if it's handled through our code enforcement division, they'll do an administrative citation per the RMC.
Yep.
Because this fine lives in the tree management ordinance, like I was talking about before, we have to handle it a little a little bit differently. If the fine's not paid, as we've mentioned, we'll not allow for ministerial permits to be pulled, so grading and building. And if there's no formal appeal filed and it's not paid, then we'll move on to the next step, probably refer to code enforcement and start the administrative process.
Okay, perfect. And just, you know, I appreciate the history lesson. It seems like that that violation occurred like a week before last year's planning commission?
Correct.
Right. And so, you know, the the brush piles are still there. It's pretty much blighted. I bet it was pretty, like, I bet it was nice before all that happened. And it's kind of sad that it's been a year and nothing's happened. And so I just have concern with, I understand this is just, this is kind of pushing it further along for council to consider, but we have an applicant that hasn't even paid a fine, has ignored two notices, and I just, you know, I'm concerned about staff time. So we're going to spend a lot of staff time on this project, and they haven't even taken care of a a simple violation. What do we, what what happens when we get into building permits and all those other kind of things? So it would be nice if the applicant to just, or whatever the wherever they're working out with the city, just get it resolved. And, you know, if it's litigation or whatever the whatever's happening, I know it's separate, but it's been a year. And I just have, I have reservations about approving this until that applicant just, or whatever, they work it out, either it's dismissed or it's paid or whatever, it's just resolved.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, Commissioner. We did, I don't know if we spoke to this, but we did at one point have it conditioned in the project to have this enforcement remedy in the in the conditions of approval. So requiring the fine payment, our new city attorney at the time about a year ago cautioned against that and wasn't even sure that's a legal mechanism to put the fine and a land use entitlement. And so staff has since taken that out and are handling it that way. But I I hear your concerns, I agree with them. And if, you know, if if this land use entitlement is granted and then say there's no building that's done for two, three, five years, right, because the entitlement's good for some time, certainly a code enforcement would handle it from just a blighted property standpoint and make sure it gets cleaned up.
Okay, understood. I just worry about this, your staff time, working on the project that's going nowhere, and and our staff time and and council's staff time as well, so.
I appreciate that.
Very good. Any other questions? Or are we ready to make a mo? I think the public hearing has been closed. I I think we're okay at this point. I don't know that we need to reopen the public hearing on the tree issue.
Given that the tree issue is really separate from this particular process, I mean, though I believe he is the applicant.
Yeah, thank you. So I I think we had Commissioner Goder ready to articulate a motion, so I wanted to honor that and let her do so. Oh, please, hold that just a moment.
I apologize. And sir, you don't have to respond. There's always two sides to a story. I all I have is just what's in front of us, so I'm sure you have a side of your story as well. Just work with city staff on whatever that is, just to respect you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that the commission forward a recommendation to city council to determine that the necessary findings for approval are in evidence, adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program, and approve tentative subdivision map application S twenty twenty-two zero two four one six and rezoning application RZ twenty twenty-four zero zero one five six, known as Zinco subdivision. Subject to the attached conditions of approval with the following amendments to those conditions of approval, that condition of approval twenty-five require that durable fencing material be utilized for the block post fencing, and that condition of approval twenty-eight be amended to include that all fencing around the parcel, the detention basin on parcel ten be included, and that's completely enclosed, that detention basin, so that all fencing around parcel ten detention basin be fenced and that it be made part, that fencing be made part of the LMD, and that the spec and that the LMD item specifically recognize that the gate is a LMD maintenance item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
There's a second, there's been a first and a second. I actually understood what Michelle said. So thank you very much. Are there any comments or input discussion items before we call for a vote?
I do have one comment. I was going to move to a second, but I'm glad you beat me to the punch. But just to say that of the concerns that I read in the staff report and then heard today. I do think that most, if not almost all of them will be improved through this project. You know, we have water and street concerns. This will allow, as I understand it, a sidewalk on one side of the street. So, you know, we even have human traffic, better, better flow for that and safer, certainly safer. And we're going to get the water out of the area a little bit quicker. Underground utilities is certainly better for fire and for other issues. And if I was the developer and I knew that I could start getting into the dirt if I took care of a fine and removed and, you know, fixed the trees. This would provide a tremendous amount of incentive for me. I think we're, we're likely to see movement on that as a result of the project moving forward as a whole. I certainly wouldn't want to spend all the time and money to get to this point just to let it stall out at a fine and trees on the ground. So I'm hopeful that moving the project, project forward will address all or nearly all of the concerns brought up today and, and really improve the area. Enough said.
Thank you. Any other comments before I call for a vote? I'd like to call for a vote. Dan, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Got one opposed? Did you catch that, Jennifer? Thank you. Thank you. You're, you're new exact, see, look at that. You're already taking care of me. I was about to say, where'd my blue cards go? So the next item on the agenda is 5B2 subdivision map application for the cottages at Bel Air. As articulated in the staff report and the agenda. And so I would like to, I see staff member commanding the lecturn, so I would like to turn it over to staff.
Evening, everybody. Good evening, Planning Commission. What we have here is a subdivision for the cottages at Bel Air. Application number 2023 00803 and a plan development application PD 2025 00483. I'm Drew Morgan, City Planner, and I'll be presenting the project. The location of the project is two parcels. It's on 500 and 550 Quartz Hill Road. It's zoned RM9 PD. And with a general plan designation of six to 10 units per acre. This is an overhead image, satellite image of the parcel with the general plan layer as well. This application has a very similar tentative map. Got approved in 2006. It was called the cottages as well. I just wanted to point that out and, and let everybody know. This is a very similar application to that one. The current tentative map, what we have here is three separate neighborhoods. Neighborhood A, B, and C for the purposes of this map. And behind those lots here is, you have green space and open space. So that open space area back there is going to be maintained by a homeowners association. It's conditioned in the project for that. And along Quartz Hill Road, that will be under a landscape maintenance district. These are the three access points onto Quartz Hill Road. Neighborhood C and B will take direct access and neighborhood A will be coming from Stone Canyon and onto Quartz Hill Road. As I said, this is part of a plan development plan. Here's the plan right here. This is the site plan that got submitted to the city. Got single-family homes proposed instead of multiple family dwellings to stay in character with the surrounding area. The cottages neighborhoods are connected through a pedestrian trail system. And the community area in the center, there's a community area in the center of neighborhood B. If I could get this pointer to work, I would show, show you guys. There you go. So this is neighborhood B. This is a center area right here. This is a continuation of the plant development plan. This is to show the connected trails here through the neighborhoods with the community area in the center. So here's the elevations that were submitted to us. There's five separate plans. All three bedrooms, two baths from 1,428 square feet all the way down to 1,602 square feet. The, the plans that showed diverse home facades utilizing a combination of stone, wood, and stucco. And architectural design includes the use of roof designs providing more airflow and light between the buildings. Since this is a plan development plan, there are some features that, that need enhancing. So along the, along Quartz Hill Road, all these subdivisions have walls. This plan development plan proposed a sound wall, six foot tall. Similar in characteristics to the other neighborhoods. As well as an entry feature to the cottages proposed with landscaping. General plan conformance, the overall density is 6.3 units per acre. There are site constraints, which limits the developable area of this property. And the surrounding areas are zoned for residential, single-family, and their current property is zoned for residential multifamily. This tentative map approval is more in character with the surrounding area. And the applicant submitted a plan development plan for reduced lot size setbacks and to allow private streets. In conclusion, the proposal preserves the existing community character by respecting existing neighborhood scale and character and promoting compatibility. So we did receive public comment in regards to Quartz Hill Road and evacuation for the subdivision. They expressed concerns about, because it's in a high fire severity zone. I just wanted to point out, when we send out the notices, they don't go out with conditions for the project. So I'm here, I want to speak to some of the conditions that the project has. So when development occurs, Quartz Hill Road along the project frontage, it will be widened to three travel lanes with an eight-foot wide bicycle lane on the shoulder. It will also have a masonry sound wall as well, constructed along the roughly half-mile frontage of the property. And formal landscaping with a meandering sidewalk as well. And this is kind of a visual example of what it's going to look like. On the left here. We have currently what's out there right now. That's the existing frontage on Quartz Hill Road. You got the cottages over here. And so this is roughly what it's going to look like. Except with an eight-foot wide bicycle lane. There's a, we did receive a biological study and did a secret document on this. The biological assessment has been completed for the site and no special status plant species were identified. But there was suitable habitat for the red bluff dwarf rush and mitigation measures were incorporated. A focused survey must be completed during the bloom period to screen for the special status plant. Their special status bat and bird species have the potential to occur on the site. And we have mitigation measures incorporated for that as well. Any vegetation removal and construction encouraged outside of nesting and nonviolent, not able to fly seasons. And then a buffer around any nest or maturity colony are required in season. The trees, a lot of this property is going to be proposed to be open space because of the, the site constraints. There are 350 trees proposed for removal and 759 trees proposed to remain and be preserved in open space. And with development, an estimated 300 trees will be planted. In conclusion, a mitigated negative declaration was completed and filed with the state clearinghouse for the project. The appropriate mitigation measures were incorporated and staff recommends adopting the mitigated negative declaration, determining that the findings are in evidence and approving this application with the recommended conditions of approval. I'm here for questions for anybody available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Do the commissioners have any questions of staff at this time before we go to public hearing? Please.
A question. So 2006, is that when this was initially like brought before the city, this neighborhood?
No, this was initially brought in 2023.
What was the 2006?
That map has expired.
Oh, that was just a map. Okay.
That was just a map. That map has since expired, so they're resubmitting this tentative map, which is very similar to the one that was.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions before, here we go?
Can you talk a little bit about the delay? What was the delay? Why are they bringing it back?
I'm not entirely sure. Maybe the applicant property owner might be able to speak as to why they never developed. I don't, I'm not entirely sure.
Probably give you some enlightenment since I was here.
Sure.
So approval in 2006 and it takes time to do grading permit improvement plans, all that. They read the market and basically said, yeah, this is not a good time to develop. And then through all the state, kind of enacted extensions and our local extensions up to six years, they expired in '22.
Thank you.
So the, the surrounding neighborhoods, when were they built? Like those, those neighborhoods that are out there-ish?
Roughly, I know Bel Air Estates, maybe 2004-ish, around the same time. This was a remainder parcel from, from that subdivision.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Hi, Drew. The conclusions and recommendations of the biological survey mention the Western spade foot with some mitigation measures, but it's not included in the staff report or in your MND.
So the Western spade foot was surveyed. They did a focused survey on that. I don't have the date on me, but they did focus survey that, the Western spade foot.
Okay, so that's already been taken care of.
That's already been taken care of.
Okay, and that's why it's not mentioned. So these three neighborhoods, they each have one ingress egress. And is that because they're less than 50 lots? So a second ingress egress is not required?
That, that is correct.
Okay, and they're connected with pedestrian paths that are eight-foot wide with four-foot shoulders on each side. So about 16 feet. Can that pedestrian pathway be used for emergency exit vehicle exiting?
It can. That pedestrian path is going to be doubled as an emergency access for fire in case, if they need to.
Okay, so we will have that. Will there be bollards at the, how will the? How will you prevent vehicles from driving on there that are not fire responding, like fire trucks? Okay, so you haven't thought about that. All right.
We can save that one perhaps for the applicant representative.
I don't think it's supposed to be meant for vehicles all the time. It's just, there are no situations when they need to.
It does have the advantage of being wide enough for fire, fire vehicles to access through that.
Yes.
Okay, very good. That's all.
Any other questions of staff before we go to the public hearing? Very good. We'll go to public hearing. Thank you. And I have, just, you know, I have two blue cards and I, see there? I should, I should just wait until you do this, right? The, I have three blue cards, so that's good. It'll be, and it'll be Tim McLean first. And then it'll be Greg Rath, either Bond or Bun, second. And then I have David Ledger, third.
Good afternoon. Tim McLean with local design firm of Sherrodunlap Sawyer. Happy to be standing here in front of you to talk about this project. We were a part of it back in 2006 when it first came in front of the city. And the reason that we are here now is because, yeah, 2007 happened and the economic downturn. The applicant at the time was Ochoa Shehan. They were also the ones working on Bel Air Estates. And we actually prepared construction documents. They were full speed ahead, wanted to build this project. They were very excited about it. And then the economy turned and it turned ugly quick, as we all know, and it took years to recover. So during that time, ownership changed at the property. And Murphy stepped in because his laws are always floating right over my head. And one year after the expiration is when we resubmitted. The map is basically identical to the previous map. And what has changed is the amount of environmental study. There's been more study done since then and the conditions that are part of the project have also been enhanced to ensure that they meet today's standards. And with that, I will let you know that we are in concurrence with all of the conditions as proposed, as well as the mitigation measures. And Drew did a wonderful job on his presentation. And I'm available for any questions if you have any. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Next one that I have is Greg Rath Bun or Bond? Rath Bun, there we go.
All right, thank you. I'm here to oppose the subdivision up there. I live on Quartz Hill, off of Quartz Hill Road on River Park Drive. I've lived there for 20 years as of this coming September. Been through the car fire, been through several other fires. And currently with the conditions that they're up there, that road will not handle emergency. If you look back at the news media when the car fire hit, you can see the bottleneck. It was right there where they proposed, proposing the subdivision. I live about a mile from where the three people got killed, the mother and the grandmother and two kids. I live about two and a half miles from where we lost Jeremy Stokes. This is not a good thought. It's got to be something to prove the roadway. They want to put a three, a three-lane road in there, but they didn't address the fact that it goes down to two lanes going down the hill. What are you going to do there? When we got evacuated on the car fire, it took an hour to go one mile from our house to Benton Drive. I just can't understand that they'd want to do something like this for public safety. This is a total public safety issue. They proposed another subdivision just down the road from there. That would be three subdivisions. Put in this area. It would impact thousands of people. What didn't address was in your letter, it said within a 300-foot of residents of 300 feet. That was only maybe a half a dozen to a dozen homes that got the notice. It doesn't account for people in River Park subdivision, River Ridge subdivision, Kesarik Estates, Lake Ready. We all use that road. We cannot allow another subdivision going until the city does something to improve the roadway emergency access. If that means a bridge, let's get it done. If you have questions, I'll answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the next card that I have is Mr. David Ledger. Promise not to interrupt you while the clock is going this time. Oh, but I did just get whispered. We're not supposed to whisper, so I'm going to call him out. He said the clock wasn't here last time, so it's not my fault. So I really want to highlight that. This is new. Thank you. Thank you. I'll take it. And also, one thing I want to say being your, don't start the clock till I'm through talking to Mr. Ledger is I did hear what you said. We didn't, we rushed on. I just wanted to make sure I heard very clearly what you said last time, yeah, while you were up here. So please, now it's your time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I haven't really studied this project, so I don't have a lot of strong feelings on it. I know like the gentleman stated, people in that neighborhood up Quartz Hill Road were really afraid of fire. Having led a field trip out on the, the new development the city's proposing called 850 Quartz Hill Road. So that would be a concern, but I haven't really studied that. What I, I wanted to ask was to put in the conditions of approval is monarch butterflies are now a sensitive species. They're going to be listed very soon. The public hearing on that ended in, I think, March. And, and so what they need is they need milkweed. And so that air. And so that area probably has a lot of milkweed. And so I think that they should do a additional visit there to see if there's any milkweed on that project site. Because the monarch butterfly populations have really crashed over the, over the decades. And so the milkweed is where they lay their eggs and caterpillars grow and then they become caterpillars. So, I mean butterflies. So that's the only thing I would say as far as that is. I would mention that this company did find 70 plants versus the 13 that Vester did. But also, once again, they did it in November, so nothing's blooming. They've got dead plants. So that's my gripe about the biological survey. Anyway, thank you for your time and your service to the city.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll go ahead and let Commissioner ask, Mr. Ledger, if you don't mind, there's a question from a Commissioner for you. Please go, go back up there if you don't mind. I'm a little neurotic about, I don't hear very good anymore, so this helps me.
No, that's, that's good to follow the rules.
Yeah.
Good evening, sir. So what is the best time of year to do those surveys that you spoke about?
Oh, for, for plant surveys?
You said that the month's not to do it, but what, if you were in charge, like what's the best?
CDFW recommends you go out three times, like in the bloom, like let's say late winter, mid-spring, and then late spring. And then that way you've caught them all and you've got everything. So that's how they do it. And if, if you can't, sometimes they'll just go out twice, like they'll go out in March and they'll go out in late April and you've pretty much got most of them covered.
Yeah, okay, awesome. And then, uh, thank you for your concern on the milk, or the milkweed and the monarchs. My daughter, she's gone through several seasons. She's raised monarchs and about 100, it's about like her top or whatever. So it's the real deal and I, and we follow the monarchs closely and they are close to being on the endangered species list. So I think that, I don't know, if the developers in the room or maybe they could.
Commissioner, can we have discussion amongst ourselves after Mr. Ledger is done and we close the public hearing?
So you want me to stop talking? I'll stop talking. Okay.
Thank you. Just so we bring that back to us.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I think you're giving instruction and information to all, and so I wanted to respect Mr. Ledger and have his time be done. But thank you. So that was what I had for the cards in the public hearing. I'm going to now close the public hearing and then bring it back to the commissioners now to discuss with staff, to ask questions, to talk amongst themselves. But, but it seemed like the very first item, if I may, would be for staff and maybe some of staff's helpers that might be in the room to address head-on fire evac. Who's in charge of fire via evac? How's it done today versus when it was done before? What's the same? What's different? And respond to that concern, if I may.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and start, start us off and tee up that discussion, knowing that's a big one here. Really what it all boils down to is SEQA requires, it's, first of all, wildfire evacuation in SEQA world is an emerging, sort of an emerging concept. So in 2018, I think the guidelines added the section that requires us as the lead agency to review a project. And really, we're trying to answer the question, will the project significantly impact or impair evacuation routes? Okay? And so as a lead agency, it's our responsibility to provide this commissioner, council, whomever's making the final determination as the lead agency, with enough substantial evidence so that you can all feel comfortable that we've provided that evidence that this project will not in fact impair evacuation routes. So SEQA has no impact all the way up to potentially significant impact, right? In this initial study, we haven't said that the, the evacuation route won't be impacted some. In fact, we've put on there, what, not, not no impact, but less than significant. So we're acknowledging there will be some impact to the evacuation route, but it doesn't rise to that threshold of significance. So the lines of evidence we're going to offer are as follows. So the widening of Quartz Hill, Drew already mentioned that in terms of the project frontage being expanded to three lanes and then shoulder, an additional shoulder. I think it's really important for us to remember that Quartz Hill during the car fire was actually closed. That road was under construction and not passable, and Public Works can probably speak to that a little bit more. This project now actually includes a condition of approval that requires road construction to keep the road open and passable at all times in the event of a wildfire. And I think that's a condition of approval that might have come about because of what happened there at the car fire. So when folks talk about not being able to get down the hill, they're absolutely right, but that's because the, it was a perfect storm. The road was closed and so all that traffic had to go through the neighborhood. So that's important. This subdivision meets state fire code. It meets the current codes and regulations of the day. And so that means there's multiple points of egresses in and out of the subdivision. There's a traffic impact analysis that was done showing relatively generally low traffic counts. In fact, traffic counts are low enough that it's not requiring off-site improvements. So level of service at our intersections and roadway queuing at the turn pockets and whatnot are all acceptable levels. So I know that's general traffic, but it's, and it's not evacuation traffic, but it's something to be considered in terms of overall traffic from the subdivision. The Attorney General offered up some guidance in 2022 on how to go about evaluating wildfire impacts for subdivisions. And city staff is attempting to follow that to the letter. The Attorney General recommends for, you know, high, low density development, lots of homes. There's a threshold where they actually want us to run computer modeling on evacuation routes and computer modeling on wildfire risk and exacerbation of those risks. But because this is a low to moderate density development and it's not a ton of housing units, they allow us to rely on other means. And I say allow, it's Attorney General guidance. This isn't required of the lead agency, but it's what the Attorney General says would be best practice. So instead of full modeling, what we're able to do is rely on our local experts. And so we have here in the room today, we have our local fire and police officials that I'm going to invite up here in a minute to speak to some of the particulars about how evacuation route and managing evacuation routes has, has changed from the car fire into today. And so I'm going to pause there. I have a couple other items, but I'd like to actually maybe ask our fire marshal first to come on up. This is Deputy Chief Summerlin, and he'll speak to sort of the boots on the ground, you know, knowledge regarding wildfires specific to the Quartz Hill corridor. So Jay, I'll let you take it away here and just addressing the commission's concerns on this topic.
Thank you for letting me speak to you today. My name's Jay Summerlin. I'm the deputy fire chief and interim fire marshal with the city of Redding. There's a lot of things that have changed since the car fire. Back in those times, the evacuation plans were based off of the incident management team running the fire. And they would speak with the local sheriff's department that embedded with that incident management team and then worked with RPD for the city stuff. The way that worked is people were just basically looking out in front of the fire. Let's say we want to evacuate a mile out. They look at the roads, determine where the police checkpoints were going to be and then the houses, and then they would send out the alerts. The last couple of years, we've been working on a system with the county called Genesis Protect. And that is a geographical information service, GIS mapping software, where you can download as anybody from the public. There's an application on your phone. And when we put a zone in either warning or evacuation, if you're in the area or drive in the area, it will automatically alert you that you're going into an area that's either in warning or is in evacuation, keeping you out of that. And if you live in that area and your phone goes off, it'll tell you that we're evacuating you. So it's two parts. Those are, those areas were all configured so that they're smaller geographical areas. So you're not going and saying, I'm going to evacuate 20 miles. It's, they're small. They know how many people live in those areas and we can proactively engage the public prior to it just really blowing up and say, everybody just go, go, go away. We can just systematically move away from the fire frontline out and then start evacuating people and do timed evacuation planning. The fire department's responsible for saying what's being evacuated. Police department is responsible for that actual evacuation. So any questions about how they're evacuated, you need to talk to those guys over there. I'm just the one that pushes a button that says evacuate. That's kind of how that generally works. In the sense of Quartz Hill Road, you're correct. It was a, basically a dirt construction site during the car fire. It's no longer that. All the capacity stuff are all done by Public Works in the engineering group. Fire department doesn't have any real say in evacuation routes other than our fire codes are about access to neighborhoods for fire department, not how to get them out. That is a separate thing. The fire codes have not caught up to that level yet. As you said, SEQA is just now getting involved in that. The fire codes have not caught up to that yet. I would expect something to happen probably 10 years from now, because it goes like on a five-year cycle of when we, those new ones come in. But right now, there is no fire code about emergency evacuations in the fire code.
I don't know how you want to manage it. If we had questions of the chief very specific to what he said, would you like us to do that now or wait a minute, Director?
At, at your, at your discretion, but if that makes some sense to me in terms of him, he's up here, so fire away, I would think, but your call, Chair.
Hey, if it makes sense, I'm running with it. So, so just a couple very quick questions, Chief. One is veg management. I know that's not necessarily your responsibility, but how would you characterize how vegetation management for fire protection in our city is managed today versus how it was managed at the time of the car fire?
Well, after the car, well, I'm not aware of a serious veg management plan prior to the car fire. One, I didn't work here at the time. And two, I haven't found any literature talking really in depth about what the plans were. We do now have a community wildfire protection plan that outlines what we're going to do as a community and what our priority areas are. And we're actually starting to implement that right now. So the next six months, you're going to start seeing us, this is where we're going to focus our goat grazing things that we've been doing for the last couple of years. You're going to see crews out cleaning up certain areas. But we're prioritizing those first off of critical infrastructure. Then we're going to add in some vulnerable roadways that are evacuation routes that we need cleared so that we make sure that they're open. That's our first priorities and that's what we're headed to do. And so the fire department is very engaged with that. And we're a major player in what, what things get fixed first with the finances that we have.
Very good. Thank you. My, my next one is, has there been a change in approach? Say thresholds or triggers during fires as to when you would call for evacuations today or turn that over and let the police department determine that? What's different today versus at the car fire time?
Well, I wasn't here during the car fire itself, so, but I was here for FON and ZOG and watch. And that was before Genesis Protect. And so I sat there with the sheriff's department while they were making up evacuation plans. And most of it had to do with looking at the population base of what you're trying to evacuate, how far in front of the fire front. And you would get information from the incident commander of how fast they felt that the fire was going to move. And then you made your calculations based off of that. So they'd give you, I want a half a mile out. I think, you know, this is where we should be. You'd agree on the map and then the sheriff's department would sit down, work with their cooperators and come up with a plan of action of how that was going to happen. And that happened at the incident command post.
Thank you. Those are my two questions of you, Chief. Anyone else's questions specific to fire department? Please.
Chief, thank you for your service. So have there been any fires since Quartz Hill has been in operation? I guess it was a dirt road back in 2006, but have there been any fires in the area where you actually had to evacuate some of these neighborhoods just to kind of get an idea of what a true evacuation looks like?
Not on Quartz Hill. I mean, we've had fires on Quartz Hill from people throwing cigarettes out of their car, things like that.
Were those more shelter in place kind of fires?
Yeah, it was notifying the people above where the fire, because it was on the side of the hill, tell them there's a fire below them.
Okay.
Pay attention. That was about it.
So where, where's your closest firehouse to this neighborhood that we're talking about?
That neighborhood? It's going to be Station 1.
And where's that? Is that, is that in town?
That's the downtown.
It's in town, right? So your, your response would be going up Quartz Hill while everybody's coming down Quartz Hill, right? Okay. And any concerns with that?
Uh, no.
Okay. And then, um, okay. And then anything north? Do you have any fire stations north of this neighborhood?
No, the, the closest station would be Station 6, which is Belt Line Road. It's quite the distance as a second station to that area.
And their route to get to that would still be up Quartz Hill?
They'd become a down lake and then probably Keswick or something like that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please?
I was just kind of curious, switching from the old type of notification to the kind that you have now. What kind of, I, I know it depends on the incident and everything else, but what kind of a time difference are you looking at to getting the information to people to get them out?
Oh, it's, it's like instantaneous. I just push the, the zone I want and say evacuate and it'll just send off notifications just like that.
So without all this calculation?
Yeah, I don't have to call Shascom. I mean, we'll call them anyway.
Sure.
But just so that they can do other alerting systems, because they do the cellular towers and stuff like that. But the moment I hit that button and say evacuate, it goes out instantly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. And I think back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, if I may. We do have a couple of representatives from our police department and Shascom. I don't know if you guys want to come up and maybe just speak to anything maybe Jay might have missed or fill in from your perspective. That would be really helpful. Thank you so much.
Must be rodeo week. You're in uniform, sir.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Jeff Schmidt with the Redding Police Department. Currently, I run our special services unit. We're kind of like the police first responders for any incidents that are kind of kicking off for fires. I do have some history with the car fire. I was actually the patrol supervisor the day that hit, so I can, I have that historical knowledge and Quartz Hill Road being closed and the impact that had. So I can probably speak to that a little bit also.
Was there anything that Jay mentioned or anything you'd add from sort of your perspective and the police? Jay mentioned that fire calls for the evacuations, then you guys execute them. So anything from that perspective that, again, we're trying to hit on the SEQA determination that this 55-unit development will not significantly impair evacuation routes. So we recognize there'll be some level of impairment. Perhaps evacuation routes might increase by five minutes, 10 minutes, something to that nature. But from your perspective, can you just speak to your expert opinion on 55 units at this location not significantly impacting the evacuation routes?
Yeah, I can tell you that the, the major change is the way a fire incident is managed today as a result of the car fire. So the day of the car fire or the day it came into town, there is very little, we had people in the incident command system, but we had zero influence or very little influence. That has significantly changed. We've taken a much more proactive role in just making determinations on our own as opposed to just doing what an incident management team is telling us to do. Back then, it was all pushed out by them. We had little influence on that. Today, we get to make those determinations. We did have a fire on Quartz Hill Road. I want to say it was the beginning of fire season in 18. It was right around that same time before the car fire. We did some evacuations of that Bel Air Estates. We had no issues for that fire. I think the big significant change in the way we do things or how we operate today is with this Genesis Protect, we can do future forecasting and predictability of what our traffic flows might be based on population density, because that's built into the program. So if we're looking at a fire like the car fire that's coming into town, we can sit down and we can go through that and we can plan our evacuations to mitigate traffic backing up like it did during the car fire. The day of the car fire, we went from, I think we had six officers assigned to evacuations to our entire agency running an evacuation of the entire west side of town. Because we went from doing a neighborhood or two to evacuating the entire west side of town in five minutes. I mean, that's how quickly it exploded into a major incident that we just were not prepared for at that time. Obviously, we learned from that. We've changed that. So we can look now and do forecasting, especially with those little finger streets. We can say, okay, this neighborhood, it's going to put about 85 homes out onto the street. So we can do two or three of these and then we'll launch the next wave after we know that traffic is clear. So we can kind of model how we do that evacuation if we have a major event that might be coming into town, which would mitigate a lot of that traffic, the backup that we incur or that we saw on the day of the car fire. And speaking to Quartz Hill, it was closed at the time. It was drivable. We ended up forcing Quartz Hill open for evacuations, but the population at the time was so used to Quartz Hill just being closed that we literally had to force cars to go down Quartz Hill to get out. So, I mean, that was a, and it just backed up, I think it was River, River Crest Drive. You know, it's just two lane roadway that completely clogged everything. So Genesis provides us just a clearer way, a more controlled way of doing an evacuation today as opposed to then.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions related to this? Thank you.
So the Genesis app we would have on our phone as he spoke prior, would that So the Genesis app we would have on our phone as he spoke prior, would that give us how you're directing us to evacuate so that, you were talking about forcing them down Quartz Hill, could you manage that from the app telling those people they should be going that way?
Yes, that is one of the things that we can't put into that evacuation order. If you don't already have it, I encourage everybody in the room to have it, because we're not the only county that uses it. It's probably going to be the state standard within a few years. Just from last year to this year, I noticed a lot more counties have jumped onto it. So if you have the app and you're anywhere in the state that has Genesis, if there's something going on there, you'll get the notification for that. So it works wherever Genesis is used in the state. But yes, we can, we can tell people which way to go, where their rally points would be, where the evacuation shelters are. All of that can be launched with that notice through Genesis.
Good. Any other questions from commissioners? Please.
Hi, Lieutenant. Thank you for your service. Just, do you have any concerns with, you know, this is basically going to be expanded to three lanes with a bike lane, eight-foot bike lane, with it going down to two lanes at the bottom of the hill, just creating a backup with that?
That's always a potential issue. It also depends on what we're dealing with at the time. So the issue with fires is they're so unpredictable as to where they start and which way they're going to go. You know, I think we're much more aggressive with evacuations to begin with today than we ever were in the past. So if we have, if we're dealing with a fire that's right there in that neighborhood in those green belts, you know, we're going to issue some emergency evacs to probably two or three zones immediately, which could cause a flurry of vehicles. There's always going to be other people that just leave because they don't want to deal with it later. But I don't know what the traffic studies are, so I can't really necessarily speak to what's going to happen if we evacuated two or three zones immediately or how that would bottleneck. What we are also better about is splitting traffic or trying to direct traffic in different routes to get people out of an area more quickly, because the more quickly we get people out, the more quickly we can get other fire and resources in. And I think another big change for us is the new mutual threat zones and the amount of resources that you get from fire agencies that we didn't get before. And, you know, Mr., or I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Summerlin can speak to that a little bit more, but I live in the neighborhood, one way in, one way out. It's in a mutual threat zone and I know that on a red flag day, I'm getting four city fire trucks, four CAL FIRE trucks and air resources from CAL FIRE. And I saw it happen last year. So, I mean, it's, the response is so much quicker than it ever has been in the past also. And I'm sure this isn't a mutual threat zone also.
Yeah, and I think it's your real asset, you know, I mean, you were here, you were the patrol sergeant, you were here for the car fire when it kicked off. I mean, just a huge resource for the city and certainly the newer officers. So, yeah, thank you. Appreciate the information.
I think that's all, turning back to the Director.
Thank you, Chair. The last phone friend we had was Lieutenant Salata with Shascom. I don't know if there's additional, do you feel like, or you feel like it's been covered? Okay. So we did, we did bring all these professionals with the city to offer their expertise. And I'll just wrap it up with a couple of comments and then let the commission discuss and ask further questions if you have. But, you know, the Attorney General's guidance does say, in lieu of doing modeling, that we have the ability to lean on our local experts. So that's what staff has done in this regard with our fire and police departments. And, you know, the CAL FIRE subdivision review has been brought up in public comments where you've seen that CAL FIRE has come into the town and they've done a review of subdivisions that have more than 30 homes without secondary access. And that's true. The state law actually requires the city to do that very same activity, which we're working on currently. What can be misconstrued though is that CAL FIRE is insane to prohibit development or that anywhere you have that occurring, it's necessarily unsafe. In fact, some of those neighborhoods were built to code. Our code for a long time has said you can have up to 50 single-family homes, 49, I should say, without two means of access. What CAL FIRE is saying is that there are things they're recommending to improve fire safety in those subdivisions and the city's fire department is working on that currently to determine, you know, as you can imagine, CAL FIRE's first recommendation to improve fire safety in that scenario is add a second access point, right? But that's easier said than done, of course, now that a lot of this has been built. And so CAL FIRE has some grant money and some other things. So what the plan is, is if cities implement some of the recommendations from CAL FIRE, it makes us eligible for some grant funding and that kind of thing. But they're not saying, we've identified this neighborhood, don't develop any further. It's simply sort of their, their way of following state law. The city is following state law through our general plan. What we have to do is identify all subdivisions in our town that meet that criteria, more than 30 homes without a secondary means of access. We also have to evaluate all of our evacuation routes for their viability and their feasibility. That's required by state law and our general plan. The city just kicked off a request for proposal where we're going to hire a consultant to help us do just that. So we're going to be going through this process like Deputy Summerlin, Deputy Chief Summerlin said, it's, the fire code's still catching up to wildfire. And so as the codes catch up, yeah, development, five, 10, 15, 20 years from now could look different, but today, this subdivision meets the standards and codes of today. And so just to bring it back to my first point, really what this commission needs to find is, for our initial study as the lead agency, we have to make a finding that we're not significantly impacting evacuation routes because of this project. And so with all the evidence I laid out there for you, along with our staff and their expert opinion, this is, of course, the staff feels comfortable and this is our recommendation to this commission. And it's at this point up to you to discuss and decide and ask further questions or move on towards a motion. So I'll leave it at that on the fireside and we're open to questions.
Very good. For the record, we didn't coordinate that and I just asked him one question and then all this happened. Thank you. What I would like to do though is turn back to the commissioners and say, do you have additional questions of staff or the subject matter experts that came up that are staff members also? Or comments or other items? I see down at the end.
Has there been any analysis made of the number of persons or households that might use that particular route during an evacuation?
From the planning perspective, no. I don't know if police and fire have done. I mean, that's, that's sort of what we're embarking upon with our general plan policy to evaluate our evacuation routes throughout the entire city. So we'll gather information from that planning exercise. Likely that information will make its way into our, our emergency ops plan, into our local hazard mitigation plan, likely into our community wildfire prevention plan. We've got lots of plans. Wildfire is a big deal. So that information is forthcoming. Like I said before as well, you can require an applicant to perform a modeling, a computer modeling exercise. That in and of itself, I don't know, the traffic guys might be able to speak to this, that's an emerging field too. And evacuation traffic doesn't behave the same way as your typical everyday traffic, right? And so you can require that of projects and that could be the prerogative of this body to say, we're not comfortable with the substantial evidence staff's provided and we want additional. The only thing you could really do in addition to what we've provided today, in my opinion, is perform a full-blown computer modeling of evacuation routes and how that would be affected. We don't propose that as being required in this project because of the scale of it and because of a lot of the other reasons I've mentioned, but that'd probably be the only way you could start to sort of take a stab at modeling evacuation patterns and which neighborhoods would go where. And it also depends on the fire behavior and which direction the fire's coming from and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Please.
So we have 55 single-family homes proposed in this neighborhood. Does anybody have, and this can be certainly off the top of your head, but an idea of the amount of homes in that area that are likely to dump out onto that street? Rough, rough numbers. And the ration, the reason I'm asking the question is that, you know, there's some, if we're finding that it has less than significant impact, but, and it's only a small percentage of the homes in the area, then that would correlate or seem to correlate at least?
Well, I see my team members here looking at a map, probably counting houses in their head, but, I mean, there's, this subdivision and a couple others that are coming on its heels for your consideration, probably a number in the 2 to 250-home range. Existing subdivisions, my estimation would say you're maybe at about that same number of homes. So I'm thinking of, as you go further down the hill towards Lakeside, is it? Lakeside dumps out separately on their own road. So it depends on which neighborhoods you really want to consider that are going to be going onto Quartz Hill directly, but my rough guess, and it's rough, I'd go on the record as saying maybe, and maybe in the 500 to 600-home range. I'm looking around the room if anyone else wants to take a stab at it.
And it is, and this specific proposal is 55 units, so maybe it adds, you know, 10 to possibly 15%, you know, rough, rough.
Correct. And what, what staff is really leaning on is the expertise from our, our fire and police, knowing that the car fire was, I mean, I lived in the car fire. My own mother-in-law lost her house in the car fire, so I'm super, you know, receptive to this community concern, but is that all those homes won't be evacuated at once and we're not going to dump everyone on the road at once like, like happened in the car fire, you know, conceivably. So the traffic load is going to be mitigated through metering out that traffic through the zones and through the expertise of our, our first responders. So in that respect, that's, it's sort of not a one-to-one and that's why evacuation route modeling is sort of a different beast than your daily trips from general traffic.
Thank you. If anyone, if you get something more specific later, let us know. If not, I'm good. Turn it back to you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or their subject matter experts? Please.
Jeremy, regarding the modeling that you spoke of, so I'm familiar with that. You know, it's getting better and better over the years. It's not that expensive. If the developer could do that, you know, the traffic load, just to, then, and they're, I mean, can we make that as a condition or, or ask them to do it or whatever, lean on them to do that? Because there is a lot of concern. I, I don't know when the last neighborhood was built there, maybe 10 years ago, but they do, it is a new neighborhood and there are real concerns. It's a high-risk fire zone. Forget the exact order of that, but it's dangerous up there and the modeling does exist and the technology certainly and the software's come, it's come a long ways and it's, but I think that I would be very comfortable, you know, I guess recommending that.
Yeah, I would say, you know, from staff's perspective, the Attorney General guidance does say that, that modeling is the highest bar to meet, but it also says for development of this type, which is infill, and it's at low to moderate density, it's surrounded by existing development, that modeling isn't, isn't necessary. So they say the level of analysis should be commensurate with the project impacts and risks. And so staff's expert opinion collectively is that it's not necessary and we're comfortable making the finding as the lead agency, but of course, it's up to this body. It's your prerogative to say, no, we want more, to feel comfortable making that finding. And I don't know if I messed that up. I'd look up my assistant city attorney, but it's, it's a SEQA issue in terms of a challenge. So there is trial court cases and others that say sort of lay testimony and evidence offered up from residents who have past experience with wildfire because it's impacted all of us is, is important, but it doesn't raise to the threshold of substantial evidence in terms of SEQA. And so what your expert staff has provided, it does meet that threshold of being the substantial evidence we need to be comfortable making that finding. But of course, the prerogative of this, of this commission is if collectively you don't think that's the case, yes, we could, you could send it back and require the applicant to do more.
Right, and then the developer would pay for that modeling?
Correct.
Okay.
But staff's recommendation today, for all the aforementioned reasons, that we feel comfortable being able to make that SEQA finding with the evidence we have.
Okay, understood. And just one more question. So the, the eight-foot bike lane and then the third lane, is it, is it, is there just going to be striping on the street or is there going to be a raised curb? Or is it just asphalt, just flat asphalt with some striping?
Just striping.
No, weird delineators or?
Class four bike lanes, no, no protected bike lanes.
So it could truly be used as a travel lane by a vehicle?
If needed.
If needed, yeah, yeah. Okay, understood.
And that section of Quartz Hill too, where it goes to two lanes, we do have bike lanes as well. So you're really looking at a 36-foot wide curb face to curb face, 12-foot travel lane. So should an evacuation route planning be done and substantial measures of converting lanes to opposite directions, that would be then that, that future study that's coming. So those are the types of things, right? We provide the roadway available for space and then in those situations, police, fire would weigh in and decide what we need to do in that case.
Okay, and then last question. Any, are there any traffic cameras up on Quartz Hill for, for any situational awareness for the fire department or police department? Oh, I mean, I see some on some light poles. I don't know what those are.
Those are our, those are actually our micro, no, those are radar detectors. So it's just simply counting cars, keep, doesn't keep any CCTV down.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions of staff? Then this, please.
I would be comfortable making, if you're ready, I'd be comfortable making a motion.
I'm ready.
Are you ready? At this point, I would make a recommend, well, let me pull up my, make sure I'm saying the right thing. Make a motion to recommend approval of this item as SOFI B2, as staff has recommended, with no adjustments unless I hear from, unless there was any small details that my fellow commissioners had.
So I hear a motion to move staff recommendation?
Yes.
You alluded to that you'd be open to amendments or, or friendly amendments should they occur, maybe, maybe even hostile amendments. But with that?
Well, let's make the motion as staff recommendation.
Very good. And there, is there a second? So there's a second? And so any discussion, please?
Just, just for clarification, this matter is not going to the city council, so you are actually taking action on it.
Thank you.
Everybody who lived through the car fire has at least a little PTSD, including me. And I'm sure all my colleagues here are very sympathetic to the concerns of all the neighborhoods about more traffic and evacuation routes and all of that. And that's very important, but so is stopping the spread of fire. So I would like to recommend that this commission consider requiring the developer to undertake wildfire fuel reduction in the open space and tree preservation areas. Those areas will be maintained by the landscape maintenance district, but I believe the developer should set it up so it's all cleaned up and cleared, less of a fire hazard and in a good state of condition for the LMD to maintain.
I'll take that as a, probably where we're now, input discussion item and then we can go to further. And I think what you're saying is fire fuel management plan and actually implementing it, Ms. Coy?
So I want to point you to page 69 of the packet.
69?
Condition 37. Condition 37 on page 69. Oh, I'm sorry. Page 69, item 37, requires that they produce a plan. Be prepared and submitted by approval by the city fire. Condition 37?
Thank you. Condition 37, packet page 69. Thank you. We'll pause for a moment. Didn't realize how hard a hearing I was getting until I'm sitting here having to listen to every word. Oh. Well, look at that. Pretty soon you're going to mail me a little.
We'll, we'll have Drew pull up a slide. I think I recall seeing of showing the open space that would be subject to this LMD. On the, on the right, right-hand side here. Is that the biggest one we have, Drew?
It is. So right now, how we have the project proposed is this area here is going to be maintained by HOA, homeowners association, while all the, while the Quartz Hill road frontage is under a landscape maintenance district. Let me pull up, let me get the conditions real quick. Take a look.
There's also a zone two, that there's also vegetation management to be done in zone two.
Yeah, if I understand it, there's a zone one that has a certain standard, there's a zone two, which is another 100 feet beyond that, until you hit a property line and we typically do not compel this owner to go start working in someone else's backyard.
That's correct.
It's darn planning needs the way they write it.
Way planners write it, not everybody can understand it, I.
And each zone has its own level of intensity of removal and management.
And then, if you move on to condition 38, as prior to recordation of the fi- final map, all the fire reduction work has to be completed.
Okay, that looks like a pretty much, I'm scared most of the time.
Thank you.
Any other discussion amongst the commissioners?
Yeah, I, I would like to just, Michelle's, she can probably help me out with the formalities. I'm new at this as well.
Commissioner, could you unmute your mic, just so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I, I, you know, I feel strongly about, I, I respect staff, all the subject matter experts in the room. Um, and if we, if, and everything that they've recommended, you know, I, I, I agree with. If, if the developer could pay for some modeling, they add it, then why not? If people that live up in the area, there's, you know, there's probably some concern. It wouldn't hurt anything. Um, and I mean, I certainly don't want to stall this, but, um, I would be in favor of, there's computer, there are models that are out there that, that can kind of help with this. And so, I mean, it was brought up, and, you know, I'm just kind of pushing it forward. So, if we can, can you help me out with trying to like, include this in this, uh, in this vote?
If, if, if I, if I?
We need to amend, amend the motion.
Amend the motion?
Yeah.
And add a condition, there it is.
We, we, we can do a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
The first and second agree to an amendment, but we need to decide what that is, I think is most important. And i- if I may, before I turn to staff, there's, there's two avenues. One is, um, deny the project, send it back to have this work done. As a professional who has worked directly in this field that you're referring to, I'm going to give a professional opinion, $30,000 to $50,000, and six months from now, they'll have something. And so, that's.
As, as a professional that's worked at emergency services and has done this, I, $50,000 versus loss of life, doesn't, doesn't matter. So, I wouldn't even put a dollar mount on emergency, you know?
I apologize. I didn't mean to suggest anything other than just factual information.
Sure.
Alternatively, if it's appropriate, there could be a performance measure condition that something is done before, but I'm not sure that fits very well. So, those are your, the way I see it, that I'd love to have staff give us some options before we try to.
Yeah, and we, we might tag team it here, um, in terms of the legal side, but I, if we conditioned them to do a study, let's say, I mean, that's going to further inform our SEQA analysis. So, our, our SEQA analysis today is what we're asking for you to approve. And so, um, if, if this commission wanted a full modeling done, I would, I don't know how else to do it. I'd, I'd look at, um, our Assistant City Attorney, perhaps, maybe there's an avenue, but, um, I, I don't think it would change our SEQA analysis. That's why staff's recommending what we're recommending today. But, it's, it's still a, another piece of evidence that we would use presumably in our initial study, um, to support findings that we're making. So, I don't know if we can approve a project today and require this as well.
Yeah, because the, um, the study would have an, would be able to feed into what that substantial evidence would be, we'd probably have to go back and take a look at it once the study was done to make the determination as to whether or not any other mitigations may or may not be to be done, or if everything is good to move forward. So, it is likely to delay the process of moving this forward at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Meaning, yeah, if I hear what you're saying, y- you're not seeing an appropriate way to add a condition for a future study. Instead, the option would be deny the project and send it back to have this done.
I don't see how we can condition to have the study, but still make the findings. If you see what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm tracking. Oh, yes, I, I do see what you're saying.
Because if we, if we do the study, and then the study, I don't know what it'll come up with, but if it came up with something that states there's going to be a problem, then it will throw everything off anyway, and we're going to end up having to come back.
Yeah, and I would just say that, I mean, um, it, the Attorney General guidance is guidance. It's, it's not law. Um, it's, I, I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at because of the nature of the scale of this development. Now, there is, um, we're proposing up the hill, uh, at a, at the, another project, that, the Peaks, that's more than double the size, uh, and likely that's going to go down the realm of a study. And I won't go further than that for Brown Act stuff, but I know we're not here to talk about the Peaks, but they'll be doing some modeling for that project, and it's, it's up the hill and adds to the cumulative load. So, we'll be able to see what the models present and how they're, how they're calculated and figured, and what they add to our SEQA analysis. But at this juncture, if this body were to recommend a study, um, yeah, I'm in agreement. I don't know how we would move the project forward to approval while still waiting on analysis that would feed our SEQA findings. So, it's sort of a, a bit of a catch, because what we're, what staff is recommending today and letting you know is that we feel is that we have, we've compiled all the evidence we have with us available, and that's how we're making our finding. But if we were to do a study, we'd be getting more evidence to support the finding that we're making already. What's that?
Or not, depending on how the study goes.
Sure.
So, just, uh, from a planner's perspective, um, understanding SEQA, you cannot approve a project if you're going to request for a study, because the analysis is unknown. So, you're, if you want to do the study, request for the study, it cannot be a condition. You would have to continue the item, request for the study, and we would request the developer to submit that. And if it would require another mitigation, we would have to recirculate the document for the required necessary time, and then it would come before the, uh, this body again. So, that's basically how it would roll if you decide you want the study.
That's right. And to be clear, to implement that, it would mean, um, it could be a motion to, a different motion, to continue the project, date certain, date uncertain. I mean, that's, oh, no, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to change anything, I'm just trying to facilitate understanding, is, is all at this point. I haven't even offered my opinion yet. Um, and so, um, you know, just, yeah, just, um, you know, just trying to facilitate. And so, with that said, I will offer my opinion. I, 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 I believe that the, um, the way fire evac and fires are managed today is dramatically different than the car fire example. Um, the, the fear, the emotion, the impact, the devastation is not to be discounted, but, um, we, we have people that are very, very quick in today's day and age in fire management to push that button and send out notices for long, long distances. And the systems are not perfect, but they're growing. So, so I do believe it is, it, it, it's not a fair comparison today. And I do trust staffs. And anytime you can get, um, a planner, an engineer, a fire guy, and a police guy to all concur, then, uh, I'm going to support. So, with that, I'll be happy to call for, we have a motion on the floor to accept, uh, to move staff's recommendation. We have a second?
I did a second.
Yes, we do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good, thank you. That was not an easy, uh, item, so thank you very much. I'm feeling the stress. So, um, see, see, this guy wanted to hand off the gavel. Um, now, being a man of a certain age, we've been here for two hours, and I've drank a bottle of water. And so, uh, what is the procedure for a five-minute recess? I call a five-minute recess. Thank you.
That is what I was going to.
I think it's, uh, time to move towards our chairs, if we may. I see one gaggle breaking up. I see another partial gaggle. That is the right term, isn't it? I know. Well, actually, I'm, I'm likely to bring him out of honor to my dad when it is for years and years. I've got his old gavel, so, oh, I'm going to, now that I know. Um, okay, th- thank you very much for, uh, taking a quick break. Uh, let's come back, um, bring the meeting back to order. And, um, I believe that I have, uh, agenda item 5B3, standard conditions of approval, in front of us. Um, I want to disclose some communication I've had, uh, prior to this meeting, and they were all just general conversations with professionals that work in various areas of land development, and/or their commissioner, I'll even mention it, because it came up in conversation, uh, this item. So, I have spoken to the following professionals: Tim McLean, Mike Dormer, Kevin Butler, Josh Miller, Brandon Tenney, and Commissioner Luke Minor. And just for full disclosure, I think we just said, oh, that's an interesting item and not much more. Uh, we need to make sure that we get it right. Uh, that was probably a fair enough characterization. So, I just wanted to disclose that on this item since it's, um, important. And with that, I will turn it to staff for a staff presentation.
City ready? Uh, standard subdivision conditions of approval update for you is authorized, under city ordinance, to be approved by the planning commission. And, once adopted, the standard subdivision condit- conditions would apply to all, uh, new tentative maps in the city. And what these are for is to ensure that subdivisions meet city standards, uh, are current with state laws and, and everything that regulates subdivision design under the Subdivision Map Act, and in our subdivision ordinances, and everything that happens with development of those subdivisions as well. Uh, as I mentioned, it's authorized in our city subdivision ordinance. Um, the, the first, I guess, big update was in 2010, with this minor, minor update right after that in 2011, so it's been a while since we've updated them. Uh, city council, with that update, authorized planning commission to adopt any, uh, necessary and appropriate modifications. And the reasons for modifications today would probably be summarized by staff as changes to city adopted standards over time, uh, changes to city ordinances. We recently updated our floodplain overlay district ordinance, uh, changes to state laws and agency policies over time, as well as the big one, last year, we updated our general plan, uh, with new, new mitigation measures and policies. And, just kind of going through real quick, summarizing high level, what some of these changes reflect. Uh, we did, like I mentioned, have some references in our, in these proposed, uh, standard conditions to new updated city, city ordinances. Uh, we've updated our reddings, uh, city redding construction standards, and, uh, our zoning and subdivision ordinance as well, over that period of time. Uh, state has also amended the way they do things, has amended laws, obviously, doing a lot of that, and as well as updating since that time, the MS4 municipal separate storm sewer system, uh, standards, adopting new ways to implement that over time since, uh, 2011. Building codes, fire safety codes also change, so we're bringing some of these back, making sure we're consistent. Uh, as far as the general plan goes, uh, there's mitigation measures reflected in these recommended changes to the standard subdivision conditions of approval. Uh, boiled down to what you see on the screen here, noise and vibration, cultural and geologic resources, biological resources, air quality, hazardous materials, and wildfire. Getting into wildfire, we talked about this a little bit before in the previous items. Uh, just wanted to point out, uh, just specifically the conditions that we're talking about, because I think these require a little more time to breathe and be understood. Uh, condition 25 through 29 capture a lot of the general plan policies we want to implement in our recently updated general plan, and include in our general plan EAR mitigation measures, uh, specific, uh, very high fire hazard severity zone requirements. Uh, one is the landscape maintenance districts that'll be required, 100-foot zone. in our recently updated general plan and include in our general plan EIR mitigation measures specific very high fire hazard severity zone requirements. One is the landscape maintenance districts that will be required, one hundred foot zone, another hundred foot zone two for all subdivisions in these areas, as well as a traffic control plan for during construction that addresses blockages into the roadway. And that's a specific response to the general plan environmental impact report update we did last year. For air quality, standard mitigation measures has changed over time. And we want to apply those updated standards to grading and construction of subdivisions. Operational standards, we get those recommendations from Shasta County Air Quality Management District. We want to make sure subdivisions are following those after the fact. And we also want to ensure that additional measures may be identified when thresholds are exceeded. And this is important to point out because our projects aren't going to just go forward without any environmental analysis, right? So environmental analyses will determine additional mitigation measures. These ones that we're presenting you today are standard for subdivisions. Biological resources conditions thirty-seven through forty-four get into the weeds, so to speak, on various standard conditions we would apply. So for instance, bats, migratory and predatory birds, they're protected under specific law that are enforced by other agencies, but also we're required to look at them through CEQA. And we want to make sure that all the laws are followed regardless of whether there's a significant impact under CEQA, for example. Just want to go through more of these, ensure all proper procedures are followed for impacts to aquatic protected species habitat. Like I said, we're going to be analyzing that through environmental review, determining impacts. But also, there are agencies with regulatory authority over those habitats that would have standards applied to and enforce their own requirements, I should say. There's a specific condition in there that would require additional in-season botanical surveying at the proper times. And we can talk about that more. I'm just kind of going over what's in there, what you're going to see. Also requiring procedures that agencies would require for wetlands impacts. And furthermore, we have erosion sediment control measures to protect jurisdictional waters. These are all in our minds standard practice, ensuring sensitive areas are properly identified in construction and protecting them. For cultural and geologic resources, kind of refers to a lot of law that exists and we want to make sure that the laws are being followed when human remains or whatever is discovered on site. And so when we have an environmental review upfront that may determine that there could be some potential resources on site, we would address that through these standard measures. As far as hazardous materials go, it's going to be very rare to see this applied to subdivision, but if there is potential hazardous materials due to previous use of a site, the proper laws would be followed for phase one environmental assessment. And ensuring construction activities would control use of hazardous materials, that's a law that's required at the federal level. CIRCLA is the name of the act. Noise and vibrations, our general plan EIR did identify some additional mitigation measures to address noise and vibration for subdivisions and construction of them. And vibration thresholds are also included as standard practice. We would have ways to deal with noise and vibration through standard implementation of these conditions of approval. I just wanted to recommend a couple of changes to you here in the staff report, just to be very specific. When staff uses these, in the future, we want to make sure that we're getting the species captured in there. So we might pull that condition, put it into the conditions of approval that ultimately you would see for the project. And there might not be that specific reference to the species. So we've added some recommended language for you to consider for bats and migratory birds. Just referencing that those are the species we're condition thirty-eight and thirty-nine are trying to address. And so as far as environmental determination for this action, subdivision conditions of approval is not a project under CEQA, so CEQA is not required. And furthermore, would be exempt because we're taking action to ensure the maintenance and protection of environment when applied to future projects. And so with that, we'd like to recommend that you conduct a public hearing and upon conclusion approve the proposed standard subdivision conditions of approval update and adopt the resolution. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. So now I'll turn to commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Schlegel before we open the public hearing? Please.
David, can you go back a couple of slides to the protected, yeah. So I think the next slide is for vegeta, you know, for plants and?
Go back one more.
Bats migration, I thought I, I guess my question is about these timeframes. Because at an earlier agenda item, there was some criticism about the timing of the study to look for endangered plants and all of that. So how certain are we? And it seems like this staff should be on top of that and make sure that we're getting the best environmental reports done at the correct times and we're going to discover what's actually there. So how certain are we about these March one through August thirty-first for protected bat species and?
Yeah, so as far as bats go, we're taking this from the recommendation from California Fish and Wildlife. And there's, yeah, they reference a document that cites the roosting period for bats.
Okay, so that's best practice. And that's the same for the birds?
Correct.
In the prior slide. So you don't have any recommendations for when there should be a survey of protected plant species or that?
We haven't, we're not recommending that as standard because every site's different, but we would be recommending in under condition, I'd have to get the number for you, that in season, if there's potential for a special status species to occur, in bloom season surveys be done. That could be only really used if we're not considering a significant impact, I would say.
Right, but it seems like if we're laying out timeframes for bats and birds, but we also require surveys for plant life, that there should be a prescribed window.
Yeah, so I, again, that would be, go ahead.
On forty-one there, it says that you're following the California Native Plant Society Botanical Survey Guidelines. So that seems like that would sweep up the timeframes for all the different.
Right, and we would try to get those surveys upfront before determining something, but if we're relying on biologist determinations of whether something's a significant impact or not. So that's the CEQA.
What's the process now?
Part of the review.
What's the process now?
It's just not standardized in our standard conditions, so we'll ask for those surveys if we need to.
That's right, if I may clarify, Mr. Schlegel, can you clarify that what we're looking at are standard conditions of approval that would apply with approval of a project or after a project is approved as a checklist to make sure it occurs? As opposed to the topic beforehand brought by Mr. David Ledger was making sure that studies to see if these things might exist be done at better times even before we got to this point. Do I have that correct?
Correct, yeah. We would be analyzing CEQA, asking for all the studies we need to do that. What happens sometimes is they're done out of bloom season. And I think what we might be referring to is maybe we come up with a protocol for all species types in the city. And that would be the best way to direct developers upfront to get those studies done at the right times. But in lieu of that, if we're not concerned about significant environmental impact of that species, we can move forward and the state agencies will still be able to see those impacts be mitigated for.
That's right. I think I hear you saying that the timing for studies in support of CEQA is not the topic before us today because these are things that are done after a project is approved. And there's commonality, but.
Chair, it's about butterflies. Are we good? I can talk. Yeah, so the monarch butterflies, it was brought up earlier by a member of the public. And so can you go to that slide, I think it's after this one, it has like migratory birds, like that. So the monarch butterfly, it's not an endangered species and, you know, there's lots of species that are out there, but it's a real thing, you know, I'm going to advocate for the butterfly. If you don't know anything about them, they migrate from Mexico to Canada, takes them four thing. And it's a real deal and that milkweed, it's a real deal. Some counties in California, they've actually outlawed, I think it's tropical milkweed. What that does is it's not seasonal, it's just year round. And so the butterfly stays on the milkweed and they don't migrate. And so if it's like native milkweed, that's what you want. And it's a real thing. And so he, you know, that member of the public came up there and said, hey, can we check for milkweed? And my recommendation was going to be that that milkweed just be incorporated in that new development instead of just chopping it down. And so, you know, just trying to, this is, you know, this is pretty complex, what you're talking about, migratory birds. And I think you guys just get this information from the state and you're kind of fed it, right? You're fed from the state and then you put it here, is that correct?
In my fifteen years, that standard hasn't changed throughout the state. When you're knocking down a tree, you're doing those surveys.
So migratory birds and raptors are just sort of, it's just like, what does that mean? And then the native plants too.
Yeah, migratory and raptors are protected under the Migratory Birds Treaty Act of nineteen eighteen.
So I guess it's just a discussion, you know, but not sure how it works, you know, as far as like, you know, trying to, you know, make sure the right milkweed is out there in the city of Reading. But I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, that's a project by project analysis, biologists are reporting on milkweed now because they're listed and studied. They have the same protections as an endangered species would right now, so. We don't have a standard condition to address them, I think is what you're seeing here.
Gotcha, and so like the covered species, covered, who determines what's a covered species?
Covered species?
I saw that in one of the slides, it says covered species.
That might have been a typo.
I think it was in the previous slide, maybe. Right there, covered species down at the bottom.
Yeah, so non-game mammals are protected in the state of California under California Endangered Species Act. So that's what bats would follow.
Gotcha, okay, understood. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you, Mr. Schlegel. We will now open the public hearing. I'm in possession of two blue cards. And I'd like to call Mr. Joshua Johnson as the first person and following him will be Mr. Josh Miller.
How you guys doing? Thank you so much, commissioners. Just have a few comments regarding this and my hope is that we might delay a decision on these updates and get more professionals involved. Appreciate what Commissioner Winham said, that he contacted some professionals in the community. Mr. Minor also contacted me, just letting me know that this was on the docket and I read through it today. And yeah, I was a little out of the loop, maybe it's rodeo week, maybe that's why, but hence the mustache. But we, reading through it, it gave me a little bit of concern that we're adding, we're adding some costs. So the, you know, some of the things that came up, you know, as I just ran through it, it looks like there's about eight hundred, eighteen hundred new words and we removed and updated about eleven hundred words. That may seem insignificant, but I was kind of trying to figure out, what do you think the additional cost might be to a hundred unit subdivision or a hundred home subdivision? And it could be upwards to, you know, three hundred thousand dollars or more depending on how extensive these surveys are. But even more so, I kind of look at what about the time delays? How long will it take to get homes built? How much, you know, will these surveys cost in terms of time, which are, it's already difficult? So I guess my question is, how much of this do we have that I understand updating a subdivision set of approvals, standardizing them helps us kind of clean up our documents, which I think is a great goal, to clean up the documents. But are we adding things that we have that we already kind of have in place as a general process of CEQA determination? Or do we have discretion over some of these things? And it might be interesting for this body to know what items here do we have discretion over latitude over which of them are recommendations versus requirements? And which of these, what are the kinds of costs that might be incurred in time and money, you know, with these additions? And so I guess my request would be is could we, actually before adopting these changes, conduct like a dedicated workshop with local builders, engineers and developers? Kind of go through them together, kind of figure out and answer some of these questions at a deeper level, you know, as we're looking at what the state is requiring versus what is actually within our discretion as a body? So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I think next up was Mr. Josh Miller.
Josh Miller, RROC engineers, commissioners and staff. It's good to talk to you again, it's been a long time. And congratulations, Chair Russ. I think Josh said it exactly what I was thinking, which is there seems to be post-approval and pre-construction, a lot of activities, a lot of requirements that may or may not apply, project-specific, that could add a lot of cost and a lot of time delays, which is very important to construction and timing of markets as we, some of these earlier projects, you know, alluded to with the downturn of the economy. Those things are critical to local developers, housing crisis, holding construction costs. All those things are important to factor into these. And I think if we don't look at those together, both staff and local developers and engineers, planners, I just, I would hate to do that without coming together. So I would concur with Josh and recommend maybe having a further discussion outside of this, workshop it, get some people together, so that'd be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Have another card that was passed up here, I see Mike Dormer. Oh, I should say Mr. Mike Dormer, I used mister on the other two, didn't I? It was not intentional.
Good afternoon, I know my card was late, I apologize. Good afternoon, members of the commission, Mike Dormer from Sheridan Lab Sawyer. I'm just here to ask for time. We found out about this item late yesterday as we were looking at the agenda for the previous project that was discussed. And I think it would be appropriate to, you know, whether it's a workshop or whatever, and I'm not trying to delay things, but I've been able to peruse the standard conditions quickly, but really haven't been able to dig into them. I'd like, I think that, you know, some of us that are involved in these conditions on a regular basis, it might be appropriate to have us just take a quick look, make some comments so that we kind of come together on this whole item. I don't want to talk specifically about them because I really haven't had time to look at them, so. That was a fast three minutes. We have to evacuate?
Turns out, turns out I have a fast forward button up here. We'll give you another thirty seconds.
I'm good, I'm good, so thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Dormer. If Jennifer can't, then nobody can. Okay, so what I'm going to do is that those were the cards we had, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission and turn to my fellow commissioners and say, do you have questions of staff, comments, ideas, additional discussion? Please.
Is there a big hurry to get this through? Would there be any problem with us taking a month or so to have more input from the business community?
No, there's no problem with that. I just might offer one, just a little bit of additional context, big picture. So when we adopted our general plan EIR, this was done partly as the recommendation from our planning consultant because, and I know there's a lot of new language and it's maybe scary because we're changing a lot. A lot of it's fairly standard stuff and things that we're already conditioning on projects. However, one of the big benefits of this is that you can pursue certain categorical exemptions under CEQA. Fifteen one eighty-three is one of them that actually allows you to provide the underlying technical reports and analysis. But you'll notice like I'm looking at invertebrates, it's like an if then statement, right? So it says, if the wetlands and biological assessment indicates such and such, then do the following. So it's a way we're trying to standardize our mitigation measures on projects without necessarily there having to be an initial study mitigated NACDEC, EIR, so on and so forth. So without getting into the weeds, there's. So without getting into the weeds, there's, there is, um, I think staff feels like there is some benefit to helping streamline future projects because we have a general plan and a new EIR that has a lot of mitigation measures baked into it, right? So it's a way to capitalize on all the investment we put into our new EIR so that subsequent projects can sort of have these standard conditions applied. But they are if then statements. So it's not as though every single subdivision will, will have this applied because it says if this, then do this. So sorry, that's not your question, but that's a little more, little more background. So I would say, no, there's not a, a huge time crunch. Um, the municipal code does say that this public hearing is exactly for this purpose. So we've, we can hear from the development community and hear from this body. So we'd be open to workshop in it, um, with, um, some local folks from local professionals. Um, and to probably further explain some of the context as to why the city's proposing these changes, that would be fine. Um, certainly we, we don't want to delay it for months and months, but I imagine we could put together a workshop or reaching out, uh, to these folks and others pretty quickly. Thank you.
Please.
Yeah, I think, so I got a chance to read this as well. And of course, talked to a little bit to Joshua Johnson, who got to speak a li- a bit earlier. Um, my concern I think lies in, I can't remember who said it, but I don't exactly understand. A couple of things call out that they're required by the state. Um, but I don't exactly understand what's required by the state or the Fed or, uh, the new general plan. Or it's something that we would just really like to see. And so I think that is the tough thing. And I probably would, it would be a really, really long meeting for me to get to the point where I'm comfortable voting yes on this today because of the amount of questions and concerns that I have at this point. Um, I, I think consensus for, for me, getting to that consensus would be tough without a little bit more of that background. Um, and I certainly, when I hear, um, people like spoke in the audience who are the people, you know, building, designing our neighborhoods, um, you know, three unanimous people who are like, ah, maybe, you know, maybe we need to workshop this a little bit, or at least we need to understand this a little bit. Um, that gives me pause. So I think it's tough for me. I could get into some specific issues, but I would rather look at a continuance in a little, in a, on a, a presentation that broke down a little bit more, some developer feedback, as well as where the origins of some of these items are. And just to be specific, I'm looking at 20, the stuff that is largely new, 28 on. The earlier stuff, I'm not so concerned, not so concerned about. It looks like we did a lot of cleanup there, but 28 or maybe, maybe even after that. Uh, but and then, and especially starting at 34, 35, we're just adding a lot of new things to our code that I don't understand the rationale for, and I'd like to understand more before I voted, at least voted yes on. So that's my, I'll shut up now.
Thank you, sir. I think there was another commissioner, please.
Yeah, that, that was my, that was exactly what I was wondering too. I'd like to see in this, I'd like to, I don't know how you do it, maybe highlight the stuff that's a have to, um, that are state, um, mandates and things that are discretionary. I, I had asked, um, I, I met with Jeremy yesterday and as I was, you know, reading along, I, I got to page 125 and I, I read streets should be designated to maximize pedestrian access to transit stops. I was like, what the heck does that even mean? I mean, does that mean, you know, we have lines on the street? We have, uh, you know, crosswalk assistant people? What are we talking about? And he was telling me that some of this is like boilerplate type of language. And I thought, okay, wait, then a lot of this is, but I don't know. For me, I, I think I'm in the, in the same boat you are. I'd like to see what are things that we don't have any control over, that we have to include and things that we're choosing to add. And, and within that context, I like the idea of hearing from the industry people because when you're, when you have to build it with all of this, what does that really mean on the ground? You know?
If I may, I could, I could, we could go through every single one I have written down in my notes where they come from. It's a complex web of origin stories for each one. Uh, the one you just mentioned comes straight.
If you just, if you just like, uh, maybe split it into have to and would be a good addition.
I think there'd probably be two conditions in there that come as more of staff recommended standard conditions. Everything else comes from state law, federal law, uh, stand, yeah, or municipal code. Uh, that one you just mentioned comes from Shasta County Air Quality Management District Standard Mitigation Measures. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think another confusing piece of this is, uh, if, if I'm correct and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, these are conditions, these are not laws, right? We're not creating code. I mean, we don't have the authority to do that here. That comes from, if locally, that would be a city council determination. So we're regurgitating largely state, federal, state and local code and just saying how it gets implemented on a project by project basis. So there's no new, we can't require new requirements by code. It's just regurgitating code. Now, could we do a better job of sort of summarizing and highlighting and explaining it? Sure, you know, staff's happy to do that, but we aren't creating code, if that makes sense. Because we don't, we can't do that in standard conditions. That's not the mechanism for it. Conditions of approval are required of development projects. The only way you can put that condition in is if you have a code to back it up. So we're not creating code. We're sort of reorganizing these if then statements are a big piece of it, right? And the if then for vernal pools is just regurgitating the standard requirements. If you're going to fill in a wetland, go get your core permit, go get your 401, go do this, go do that. So I'm not trying to coerce anyone into making a decision tonight, but I guess I want to just explain, it's a lot of new language that looks scary and new and like we're adding all these requirements. We really aren't. We're just organizing it better and we're standardizing it so that we can lean on the mitigation measures of our general plan EIR. Because the work's been done already. You know, for instance, the general plan EIR contemplates build out of residential, single family zoning. And it says, yeah, we might hit some wetlands. Yeah, we might have to cut down some trees in the general plan EIR. Therefore, we're going to mitigate by doing XYZ. If we bake that into the standard conditions, it actually helps future projects in terms of streamlining because we've already done the environmental clearance. So I won't belabor it anymore, but this isn't new code. This is standard conditions that references all existing law. We don't have the ability to create law here.
Any other questions of staff? Please.
So just out of, because going back to what Joshua Johnson had stated, Jeremy, this is probably for you. As it costing additional money to developers? Are you saying that everything that's in here now is already expected of those developers? So therefore it would not be costing them extra money?
Uh, I'm thinking 95%. I mean, I, I'm looking at, uh, I think one that, what did you say Luke? It was 20, for instance, um, 28, uh, packet page 123. For projects located in the very high fire severity zone and adjacent to steep slopes, open space, wildfire fuel reduction shall be conducted as required by the Reading Fire Department and shall be thereafter maintained. That's a local requirement. It might not be codified?
General plan EIR mitigation measure wild.
So, okay, so I'm wrong. It is, it is literally already required. So, and Dave, David knows this stuff better than I do. So he, like, I'm confident he could speak to each one of these if we wanted to be here for a while and he could go one by one. Um, but yeah, they're like 98% of it, we don't have control. It would be required of a project anyway. Um, now we could go through it with a fine tooth comb and try to peel that out. We could workshop it with developers or, or their professionals, happy to do that. But I, I, I don't know that there'd be significant changes other than like David and I were talking, maybe some verbiage changes, some wording changes. You know, but a lot of this is just required of development. We have very little control.
You answered my question to the.
Okay, so yeah, back to 28. And again, not trying to get into the weeds, but some of my, I certainly see the advantage of doing the fire mitigation. But one of the unintended consequences incorrect, and I, I guess I don't know for sure, are all neighborhoods required to have a landscape maintenance district? Because what it looks like is we're, it, it looks like we are through, through achieving a very good goal. We're going to throw a complicated and long lasting requirement at new neighborhoods. Um, that is relatively burdensome. You know, I, I just don't understand what the unintended consequences are. And are there neighborhoods that really it's not necessary? But we're going to end up putting this kind of onerous burden and cost on it. You know, again, I, we could go through a do- you know, a dozen or more of these and I'd have questions like that.
Well, it might be helpful to tie them back, you know, to your point because as David just mentioned, if that's a general plan EIR mitigation measure, we, we can't not do it.
For projects in the wild.
In the very high fire, for, for example, right? Because our general plan and our, it's accompanying EIR say it must be done. Um, it'd be interesting to connect the dots, right? And we could sort of take the commission through it one by one.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, but that's very valuable information that, hey, the, the origin of this is in our general plan. Um, this is why it's, you know, it's already in the code and therefore it's, you know, we have to do it. Um, that I just, you know, if I, if I'm asked to look through these, look through this stuff and make a vote on whether I, it should move forward, I, it's just tough for me to make that determination with the information I have in front of me right now. Now, let me speak in favor of what the overall project of what you're trying to do. I love the idea of streamlining things and particularly, um, Jeremy, you and I have talked about the SEQA exemptions that this type of work, um, streamlines toward. I think that would be extra, extraordinarily interesting to bring into a few, future proposal because there's a good chance for larger projects that would trigger SEQA. Um, the, the, the extra measures in this could, would be entirely offset by having to, um, not go through the full SEQA process. So there are trade offs, but again, I don't, I don't know that I have all the information to really look at this. It certainly doesn't sound like the people who are building the homes in our city have all that information or feel comfortable with it. So that's why I landed where I land today. And it's not a future statement. And I really appreciate the work and that direction we're working towards. So.
I saw a hand motion on the far end first. Was that?
Yeah, I.
I thought so. Thank you.
I think with all the discussion that we've had, it would, it would be wise for us to table this for about 30 to 60 days. Um, and have staff come back with, um, some, um, highlights or whatever that will show what is required and what, what little cha- little local changes are being made to help us better understand what impact is going to have and especially to have a workshop with the, um, local contractors and builders.
Commissioner. So I do agree, uh, you know, you're looking, just reading some of these paragraphs, you kind of have to get into it to figure out, I guess, the source of it. And it's, there's not a lot of consistency with that. And, um, so it's like, well, where does this come from? You know, is this local, is this state, is this federal? Um, maybe even at the end of the paragraph, you just do a citation, like this is a law, like California law, blah, blah, blah. And parentheses, it makes it really easy, like we don't have a choice, we have to do this. Um, is it a guideline versus a law versus a municipal code, something like that? Um, but I do see that you, um, I forget the one, I just looked, oh, the human remains. I think it's page 129 on the packet, uh, page 11 with the document, 129 on the packet. Um, that's, that's actually accurate. That's what you're supposed to do. If you, human remains, you call the coroner's office. And I was reading, I was reading the, the, um, line out below and, uh, yeah, that's, I actually had that on a subway project. We had a human remains discovered and I had to do this exact thing. Um, and they come in and, you know, they do what they do. So, um, I think there's, there's probably a lot of good intent in here with trying to just clean this up and make it a little more palpable with everything. Um, but I do agree that pot, hitting the pause button and maybe just collaborating with our local business community, you know, our builders here, just to make sure that, um, because they're the ones and it's certainly, you know, outside investors that come in. Uh, we don't want to confuse them, especially if they're already looking at our, you know, our city to build some things and things like that. So, um, but like vibration, page 132, that, that's clearly laid out. It's from the general plan. All those things that are in there are already in the general plan. So that's, you know, it's sourced is, is basically what I'm trying to say. So, but yeah, I would be comfortable with, um, some type of workshop, just to make sure we're, we're doing this. Um, and then one other thing is, uh, getting back to the, you know, the, the biologicals and the, you know, the, um, species and things like that. Um, there's nothing really in there because, you know, different things end up on these like endangered list all the time. But there's nothing in here that says that if, if a new species is, or a plant or, or, or whatever is now updated, that, uh, that we have to implement that. So maybe some language in there that if, uh, let's just say the monarch butterfly ends up on the danger, danger species list, we have to include it in this. So it just, is there anything in there that where you have to like, you have to check the state to see if, um, a new species is on there?
I think if we had standard conditions that we could recommend for other species that as they get listed, we can come back and, and present those. Is what, one way you could deal with that.
Just something where you have to check it, right? It's codified where you have to check it, you know, and it's updated and there we go. So the builders come in and, and we're just in compliance with the state. So unless I missed that.
Yeah, but on a project by project basis, that's still getting addressed, I guess is one thing to consider.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I saw Mr. Minor flinch, but was that?
Oh, I just, yeah, I just had one, uh, since we're, since we jumped to 45, um, item 45 under cultural resources, the one big, the one word that gave me, you know, concern or pause is right at the beginning. If the cultural resources analysis identified existing or potential existing resources on the site. I just, you know, doesn't every site have potential, you know, in our, I, I'd, I don't understand what the limits of that are and it, that if somebody thinks that maybe, is this triggering the, an entire process? Although I think the process it seems really good, but you know, I, I had concern with that word potential. Again, I don't mean to get into the weeds too deep, but since we were on that item.
Well, one way to think about that is any site anywhere has potential for human remains or sensitive resources. So when you start digging, there are standard ways to deal with that. But maybe if it said potentially significant, it would have more, uh, applicability to SEQA is what, what we're doing with SEQA. But I think really, um, a lot of these things are just going to apply as standard anyway. The.
Well, I think, I, I think, and, and sorry to cut, let's cut it off. But if the cultural resources analysis that didn't find existing or potential resources on site, then there's a whole bunch of steps to follow. It makes me think that there are some sites that we typically wouldn't follow, have to follow all those steps. But if we add the word potential in, then it's very, it's not subjective or it's not objective. It's very subjective as to when or why something could, like somebody could say, maybe there's something on site. So we need to follow these steps. I, I don't know. They, I, I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of that language.
I think you were about to ask for my opinion.
I am.
Sorry for those of you that don't know, this, this, this might be a problem. You, you might need to move Mr. Minor, um, or me. Um, i- 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 if, if I may, I, I, I think the goal and what you're putting together is exceptional. I love, you know, I want to go right down this list and you know that, that I personally find myself looking through these things and, and literally hours and hours and hours are spent both on city staff, developers, owners, everybody trying to go through and understand and parse words and conditions of approval. And that's one of the dilemmas is that we do in fact parse words. And so I think it's important that we get the words right. And right now, um, because, and, and it's no, no fault, it's just, um, we put a bunch of Bondo on a, on an old Chevy here. And it's, um, you know, trying to modify things that are there. And so from topic to topic, there's inconsistent language. Um, as simple as MS4 requirements are referred to on one paragraph, you get down and it has both, um, the original, um, construction general permit and the more recent modification to it. But the next one only refers to one of them. Well, my little engineer brain stops. Um, I go, oh, there's, what is the reason why that wasn't done? And, and I see a lot of things in here that are partial regurgitation of things that are already in ordinances. And, and it's, it's, uh, one of my neuroses, you'll probably hear me say that a lot, I have them, is that if in the ordinance, I don't want to see it ever again as a practitioner in the industry. is that if in the ordinance, I don't want to see it ever again as a practitioner in the industry. Because what happens when it gets articulated here, it's summarized and it modified and different words are used, and now we're back parsing words. Landscaping's the old classic. It's been this way forever in multiple jurisdictions. Because of certain rubs, um, staff in councils and commissioners cherry pick certain requirements and landscape ordinance and they'll spell them out. But that's a really small subset of what's required. And we're probably doing a bigger disservice to everybody by trying to list the top six landscape requirements in conditions of approval, when there's actually pages of landscape requirements in the ordinances. And I know I've had clients that, well, that's all that's required. I'm sorry, but I have to be the bearer of bad news, there's a whole ordinance here. And, and so there, there are just several words like that that are, are not real clear. The if then statement, um, director that you pointed to, I love that idea. But I can point to several of these where the if then is not clear. I'm not sure if the if then was up in a previous item. And I spent a long, long time trying to understand, well, where did, where did the, 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 the colon leave off? And is this number a subset? Is that an A? Is it, is it there? So, so I really got kind of hung around the axle and have lots of red lines and questions, just trying to understand it. Now, all that said, which sounded really negative, I didn't mean it to, I just tend to speak or, you know, articulate to be heard. I think it's all very fixable. I don't see anything in here that caused me to go, you know, holy cow, what have they done? Mr. Schlegel's gone nuts. Instead, it's just wordsmithing and to get it close, not perfect, uh, but closer. And it'd be nice if there was a way to, uh, I understand time is always of the essence. But to have, you know, I would personally trust staff to pick people, don't pick me, pick, pick these other guys that are sitting out there and a few others to sit down with you and say, let's sit down a couple of times and go through these. And wordsmith them a little bit, make them a little bit more clear. And then I think it'd be pretty easy to approve. And I heard s- another, I saw another hand, there we go.
Okay, so, on the cultural resources one, I deal with a lot, this a lot in my real life. Okay, so it says, if the cultural resources is, you know, identifies potential resources on the site, then skip to A. If requested by a tribe, the project proponent shall retain a tribal monitor to monitor all vegetation, on and on and on. Well, so all they have to do is request it. So there's no real, like, y- y- somebody's got to trip a trigger and then that allows them to come in and monitor. This is like, if there could be a potential resources on, resource on the site, which you pointed out is pretty much everything. So pretty much anytime at all that you're doing a project, if a tribe requested it, then they've got to retain a tribal monitor to monitor all vegetarian, that, that, this is gonna be really onerous, depending on what's going on and depending on how much pushback from that particular group. Because I've watched stuff like that become an absolute weapon and, uh, and a, a project killer. In, in a lot of cases, not necessarily in the city of Redding, usually in farther places that I work. But, but when I read that, I'm like, oh dear, there's the big door that everybody runs through. So I, I, I don't know about that, but I'd be super curious, uh, what the industry folks see when they read this. And I would be super interested to know if that's a requirement. Because like your, the original thing, the red part, because I was reading through the red stuff. I was looking at all the, your red changes and, as a former English teacher, I really like your revisions, the red revisions, actually. Your wording was much better. But when I was looking at the small red paragraph that this whole thing used to be, I was like, I kind of liked the old red paragraph. Like, can we keep the red paragraph? I kind of liked it. Like, if, if you have this, then you have this. And here's some other stuff that makes perfect sense. And then if the object is deemed potentially significant, appropriate treatment and measures shall be followed. And it didn't give anybody a giant, you know, it didn't say giant free-for-all to me. It says giant free-for-all now. That's just me.
Me if I, I had Mr. Minor one more time and then I'm gonna cut him off. And then I'm teasing, and then we'll come back over here, thank you.
I just wondered if, it sounds like there's a couple more things to, people have questions on, but I wondered if you were ready for a motion, so. I can, I can hold and, and allow a, a few more questions.
Yeah, I do want to hear one more time and then I think it's time for a motion.
Great, uh, so just in case I missed it, what was the, what was the catalyst? What was the driver to, to change this document? The old Chevy. Like, why do we?
I mean, I think it's, it's a combination of a lot of things. Changes to law over time. And, but I think the main driver is probably the general plan update last year.
Okay, and so this, so this is basically needs to be updated. When was the last time this was updated?
Twenty-eleven.
Twenty-eleven, okay, got it. Thank you for the history.
I'd love to have a motion or any other ideas from commissioners?
I will make such motion. I move that we continue item five B three until, um, to give staff a chance to work through a few of the specific issues and, um, questions that came up here tonight. Hopefully that allows some time to meet with some of the local development community in addition. And, um, I look forward to seeing it back, because I do think this is really good work and important, in allowing us to streamline our processes and certainly achieve some of those goals of the, the, allowing us to work more efficiently in regards to SEQA.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, I have first and a second. Summarizing that, it's continue the item. Would you like that continued to date certain or does it really not matter? Because this is a really short noticing thing if it's a separate hearing.
I leave that to the discretion of staff, certainly.
Thank you. And I'm looking at staff.
The da- date uncertain works for staff at this point.
Thank you, date, date uncertain, thank you. You okay with that, first and second? So continue to date uncertain?
Yeah.
First and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, I want to thank staff, because that, you really did, I'm sitting here feeling bad. Mr. Schlegel, I don't really fa, feel bad for the director, but I feel bad for Mr. Schlegel, all the work you put into it. But, um, it's, uh, I, I really do, do look forward to, um, you gathering, in whatever fashion, you guys gathering a small group, hopefully a, a group that then come back and, um, commissioners say, yeah, it's okay, people have looked at it. So thank you very much, appreciate your, your patience as we work through that. The next item is, uh, public comment. Do we have any, um, people that turned in blue card from the public, things that are not on the agenda? Seeing none. The next item is, uh, commissioners' comments. Do any of the commissioners have any comments to make at this time? Excellent.
Great, um, so just want to thank staff. Uh, I worked in municipal government for like twenty years. And when I was a supervisor and a manager, um, I, I sat in your chairs, I, I walked in your shoes and I prepared staff reports, I had to sit in front of commissions and take ridiculous questions at times, you know, jokingly. And then also for city council, uh, meetings. And, um, and so I appreciate all the behind-the-scenes work that you do. And even just sending this back to you, you know, you've got enough work, uh, ahead of us. But, um, you know, I, I, you know, I'm, I've met all of you and I'm, I'm super happy to be here. And I just want to know that I appreciate what you do. And so you're kind of the unsung heroes of the cities. I know the, uh, you know, the, the, the blue team and the red team, you know, the police and fire, they get all the accolades and we love them, of course. But, um, you know, you're trying to, um, develop this city, it's smartly and, you know, just keeping it, you know, keeping it legal. And so, yeah, just thank you, thank you, thank you. Yep, and I have one other thing. So going through these, uh, these two subdivisions here, I noticed the street names, um, came up and it's in the municipal code. And this is, you know, a concept, and I don't know how we do it here or, or whatever, but it, it seems like street names is in this sort of, uh, this body here. But, um, allowing the developer to name, name a street, right? You know, what's, what's the idea when they, so I live on Oak Street or I live on Maple Street? It's kind of whimsical or whatever. Is there really any meaning to that? And, uh, and when I moved to Redding in Shasta County, I was, you know, I was really encouraged by all the support that the veterans get. I'm a veteran myself of the Marine Corps, uh, had a combat tour in Mogadishu, Somalia, uh, many, many years ago. And, um, and I think it would be interesting to explore, like naming streets after veterans. And form in a committee like we, we do with the, uh, you know, the builders out here and the developers, we would form up, you know, we would team up with some of the veteran, uh, organizations that are out there. And, um, and then either make developers name streets after veterans. And these would be local veterans to Redding. And so they would opt into this system basically, and maybe their families, maybe their deceased, maybe they were killed in combat or something like that. And going back to, you know, World War Two, but yeah, naming streets after veterans. So it's just an idea, uh, I'd love to push this forward, the city staff, city manager. And then, you know, obviously this, you know, our commission here and even city council to consider this. But, uh, I think it would be really honoring to, uh, and, you know, if I lived on a street that was named after a veteran, it kind of is like, well, he's kind of, he or she's kind of watching over me, kind of protecting my street, they're still on duty. And, uh, it's just the way we could really give back to our veteran community, so. That's what I have. Jeremy, any, any thoughts with that?
I, I appreciate those comments, Commissioner Nance. And, um, you know, I think that can be something I take back to our city manager, um, to discuss and sort of have him run by council as, as whether they'd want a direct staff to start pursuing, uh, looking at the code and seeing if those amendments would be something they would prioritize. So I'll definitely take that back to the city manager for consideration.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, any other commissioner comments? Actually, I had, I had one weird idea, which you just, you just fed right into it in a really good way. And that is, I may give some thoughts, so I'm warning you guys, that we sit up here and we really don't know each other, nor do people, you know, necessarily know each other. So I, I, I may choose at some point during commissioners' comments, I'll have staff warn you, to say, how about just a five-minute, who, who you are, why you're here, what's your background? I know Michelle Goddard, for example, and I know a lot about her, her background, but I probably don't know as much as I think I know that is informing her thought process, her thoughtfulness, the way she attacks things. So I just threw that out, I'm gonna let that, just let, in my own little head, ponder that a little bit, maybe talk to staff and say, let's try to make sure we know each other a little bit and we understand where we're coming from and that's what we're laying as well as staff. Any other commissioner comments? You all right with that? Sorry, he glares at me. Director's report, thank you, item number eight.
Yeah, just real briefly, uh, want to just extend a warm welcome to Commissioners Nance and Ryan. Thanks for being here and serving our community. Um, I've had the opportunity to meet with each of them individually, get to know their stories a little bit and their background and excited for the perspective and expertise you're gonna bring to this commission, so, uh, thank you. And just real quickly on the Riverfront specific plan, um, stay tuned, that's coming to the city council next week, Tuesday. So I might ask, uh, our assistant city attorney here, uh, in terms of Brown Act, if this commission wants to attend the meeting, does that fall under an exemption of sorts? Can they attend? Should they let us know and Jennifer and I can figure out quorum issues, et cetera?
Typically, they could attend, but they need to be very careful about how they do it.
Okay.
Don't sit together, don't discuss anything to me.
Yeah, you can also, you know, stream it from the comfort of your home on a couch, you know? I would, I would like to do that on occasion, but I have to be here, so. But I, I would encourage you to inform yourself, either by checking it online or if you're gonna come, let us know and we'll help you work through sort of Brown Act issues. But that is coming up next week. It's going to be an opportunity for the council to hear about the emerging concepts coming forth from that workshop we had a couple weeks ago. And so, um, I'll leave my director's port short and sweet tonight, but just a heads up that that's coming next week to city council. And I am available for questions if you have any. You can watch it after the fact and do it at one and a half speed or something like that, right? So just wanted to give you a heads up and that's all I had.
Very good, thank you. And next item is item number nine, so is adjournment, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.